Pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the closed meeting of the School Board of Stafford County on January 25, 2022 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies and to only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have the roll call, please?
Dr. Chase?
Agree.
Ms. Guy?
Agree.
Ms. Halsted?
Agree.
Ms. Healy?
I agree, but I want to note that I was in for a portion of the meeting as I noted at the beginning. I was not in for the discussion of the high school site.
Ms. Randall?
Agree.
Ms. Sigmund?
Agree.
Dr. Warner?
Agree.
Madam Chair, the motion passes unanimously.
Do we have a motion coming out of closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a motion to authorize legal counsel and staff to initiate a quick take condemnation proceeding for the acquisition of an 83.4886 portion of parcel ID number 3637, partial, as well as a temporary construction easement and sanitary sewer easement on parcel ID number 3637, partial, including: A. Provide the required 30 to 45 day notice to the owner of the school board's intent to file a certificate of take if negotiations remain at an impasse and after a successful, comprehensive plan consistency review pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-2232. Filing the certificate of take within 30 to 45 day period and C. If necessary, filing a notice and petition of condemnation within the time required by law.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to abstain from the vote on this motion since I did not participate in that portion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And one abstention, that would be me.
We have a second motion coming out. To authorize legal counsel and staff to make an offer to purchase an identified and specific parcel or parcels of real estate necessary for roadway access to new construction of High School 6 at its appraised value to engage in negotiations with the owner for such purchase and to return to the Board for review of the negotiated contract terms for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. I'm also going to abstain on this motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And one abstention, Madam Clerk? No further action from the closed session. We're going to adjourn the closed session and we will open the meeting in five minutes. We want to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Present.
Ms. Guy?
I don't even know why I worry.
Present.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Was there an item that you wanted to take off? No? Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have JRTC. Oh, we do? Yeah. Oh, shoot. We'd like to invite the Brookpoint High School Navy JRTC to come forward with the colors.
Colors, full. Order, arms. Ready, cut. Left. Base. Carry, colors. Ready, cut. Freezing, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Border, colors. Ready, cut. Right. Base. Forward, arms. Forward, march.
We'd like to recognize the members of tonight's color guard from Brookpoint High School's Navy JROTC. Cadet Lieutenant Samantha Vigarero. Cadet Lieutenant Junior Grade Jalen Guerrero. Cadet Seaman Hannah McGowan. Cadet Commander Patricia Tingay. And Master Sergeant Reed, retired U.S. Marine Corps. Thank you for being with us. That brings us to awards and recommo-nitions. Ms. Osborne?
A proclamation to recognize February 7 through 11, 2022 as National School Counseling Week. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas school counselors are a vital part of recovery efforts as they have adapted their programs to meet student and community needs in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas school counselors act as advocates for educational equity and social justice, they empower marginalized students, close achievement gaps, and address systemic barriers. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school, now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates February 7 through 11, 2022 as National School Counseling Week throughout the school division, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 25th day of January 2022.
Are there any counselors in attendance tonight? Thank you for coming. Ms. Osborne?
A proclamation to recognize February 2022 as African American History Month. Whereas in 1976, African American History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of African American history throughout our American experience, and whereas the history of people of African heritage goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative societies in the history of human existence, and whereas African Americans have played a significant role in the history of the United States from the early days of the pioneers to our present day leaders in such industries as aerospace, finance, government, and international trade, and whereas African American History Month is a time for all Americans to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African Americans whose contributions are vast and wide, and whereas during African American History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements they have made throughout our regions, now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates the month of February 2022 as African American History Month throughout the school division. We encourage the celebration of the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions of African Americans and encourage participation in educational events honoring the contribution of Black Americans, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 25th day of January 2022. Now, in honor of African American History Month, Principal Eric Underhill of Shirley High Middle School will read the timely address he shared with his school community regarding the lasting impact of Dr. Martin Luther King and how it is still impacting our community to this day.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the School Board, Dr. Taylor. It is my pleasure to share this address with you. As a former social studies teacher, I feel very strongly that our students see the relevance and their own connection to our historical leaders from the past and generations going forward. This week, we celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Dr. King has a significant impact on the society in which we live. He promoted nonviolent activism against racial inequality, segregation, and inequity. Dr. King's legacy is one of inspiration, one that calls each of us to make our community, country, and world a better place for all people. It is our responsibility to treat one another with the respect and dignity we each deserve. When we work together, listen to one another, and give kindness to one another, we will always achieve greatness. Dr. King's words inspire me each and every day. He says, quote, "The time is always right to do what is right." We need to look outside of ourselves and consider one another with our actions, our words, and make a conscious effort to do what is right. Dr. King stated, life's, quote, "Life's most pertinent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" As we return to school this week, I encourage you to think about this question. How can you positively contribute to something kind for someone else? How can you do what is right? How can you make our school and our community a better place? Another part of his legacy is perseverance. Dr. King encountered challenges and resistance to his activism, but he persevered. He continued to speak, mobilized communities, and constantly called for action. He recognized that progress and change would take time. However, he provided the consistent encouragement to all by saying, quote, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl, but by all means, keep moving." As I reflect upon his words, I think of you, our students, our Timberwolves. Like Dr. King, you each have goals for yourselves and for your community. To achieve these goals, you will need to persevere, you will need to work hard, overcome obstacles, and you will need to work together with others. Keep your eye on the prize and work toward it each and every day. It will take time, but you will succeed. As a closing thought, Dr. King states, quote, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character is the goal of true education." His words inspire us to embody our Timberwolf pack and pride. Together, we are the Timberwolves. We are a pack. Together, we are positivity, accountability, continuous improvement, and kindness. We each demonstrate our Timberwolf pride of passion, respect, integrity, determination, and excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item 4.03, recognition of STAT Presidential Scholar and of Student Artwork for the SCPS-FY23 Budget Book.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Taylor. The Superintendent would like to recognize individuals each month who have contributed significantly to the goodwill and advancement of positive culture among their school, department, and community. Tonight, we recognize two students whose academic excellence reflected greatly upon themselves, their school, and the school division. Ms. Oladipo, if you could join us, please.
Dr. Stempel, why don't you join us? Ms. Ellis?
I'll take a picture. Or go up there.
Later this evening, Dr. Taylor will present his proposed operating budget. Students in Ms. Amy Ellis's Design and Multimedia One class at Mountain View High School created designs for the budget theme. Of the 21 renderings submitted, Ms. Ariat Oladipo's design was selected for its bold, fluid design that conveys movement and the strong conviction to move the school division forward. Her artwork is featured throughout the budget slideshow, the executive summary, and on the website. As an artist, Ms. Oladipo enjoys creating original pieces that showcase her imagination, creativity, and the perception of life around her. Additionally, her designs for the Stafford Soccer Logo and Hartwood Hornets T-shirts were also selected as the first place artwork in two other competitions this year. It is her hope that her work will continue to be appreciated throughout a distinguished career as an artist and digital animator. Thank you, Ms. Ellis, for encouraging your students and submitting the designs for review. Congratulations, Ms. Oladipo. We wish you continued success in your design journey. Ms. Divine, if you'll join us, please. Ms. Annie Divine was selected as one of Virginia's five nominees for the U.S. Presidential Scholars for Career and Technical Education. Ms. Divine is currently enrolled in the biomedical STAT program, traveling from her base school at Brookpoint to attend classes at North Stafford High School. Ms. Divine has been interested in this field for as long as she can remember, recalling when she earned her First Aid Badge in Girl Scouts. Her aunt, a paramedic, showed her how to use the blood pressure cuff and stethoscope, which sparked her interest in becoming a first responder. She began attending STAT Night when she was in sixth grade with her older sister, who also earned this recognition in the STAT IT program two years prior. On her 16th birthday, Ms. Divine earned her Emergency Medical Technician Certification and later joined the National Registry of Emergency Technicians. Ms. Amanda Colette, the STAT Biomed Lead Teacher at North Stafford, notes that Ms. Divine has been passionate and eager to be involved since day one. She emphatically jumped on the opportunity to be on the STAT Student Council and help improve the STAT program by creating opportunities for students to be involved in the community and to make a difference in the lives of others. She has helped organize food drives, adopt a family holiday giving, penny wars for nonprofit organizations, annual STAT T-shirts, middle school visits to promote STAT, STAT Night, and STAT freshman orientation, as well as running the programs by monthly meetings. Ms. Divine recently taught her classmates a Stop the Bleed training course. She is a certified instructor, and the course fits in the program's emergency care unit. Ms. Colette usually shows a video. However, Ms. Divine demonstrated again her expertise and eagerness, volunteering to teach the class and train students individually on proper tourniquet use and wound packing. Ms. Divine has also completed the certification process and was able to award each of her classmates with their official Stop the Bleed certification. Her year-long capstone project is also focused on making a difference in healthcare. Ms. Divine was the first to secure a mentor and has been passionate about her project since getting it approved. Congratulations, Ms. Divine. We wish you not just success not only in this nationwide competition, but in your future as a first responder. You are certainly off to a brilliant start. We have a future nurse.
That brings us to item 5.01, the Superintendent's FY23 Operating Budget Proposal. Dr. Taylor?
We're going to turn on all of our electronics here.
Oh, I'm going to watch it over here. Yeah, I think it's going to go over there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ooh, we're getting intimate here for a second. I didn't know that was part of the plan. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity, Madam Chair, members of the Board. And as you can see, we've got our fabulous student artwork showcased throughout our presentation today, and some of that digital art is very marketable in today's world. And a lot of what we hope to do for our kids is to prepare them for life after high school and life after whatever level they're in right now, and we are certainly very proud of our students as they make that journey. I thought I would start off by telling you the punchline right up front. I'm a fan of what we call a bottom line up front or a bluff slide to tell you what the punchline of this budget is. And we have a lot of challenges in Stafford County public schools, and I have a handful of proposed solutions. Not a litany, not a list of 20 different proposed solutions, but really just a handful to target some really important details of some things that have been troubling us lately. And so you're going to see this theme throughout today's presentation as we focus on trying to find responsible solutions given the amount of revenue that we have to work with. So, I want to begin by talking a little bit about who we are as a school system, and I've got a litany of numbers here, and I'm not going to list them all off, but we are one of the largest school systems in Virginia. There are 132 school systems in Virginia, and about 100 of them are 2,000 or less students, and we are by far the largest in our region. And our students are served well in Stafford County public schools, and we're also a very diverse community. We have 86 spoken languages at home. We serve them in 33 very different schools at 35 different sites with different programs that we offer. We host a number of programs that are very competitive and that do help prepare our kids for their future. We also serve a lot of meals in our school system. We served 1.5 million lunches last year and 1.4 million breakfasts. We traveled 1.8 million miles in our transportation department this past year. We did so with 194 buses. You have staff of 4,250 individuals who wake up every morning wanting to serve kids. And I will say, as someone who's been new to this community, and this is my seventh week in your employ in Stafford County, I've learned a lot. We have fantastic people who live here. We have this great community that wants and cares very deeply for kids and wants to do the very best for kids, and the teachers that I get to go to work with every day and the staff that I get to go to work with every day feels the same way. It seems like a lot of money to have $341 million, and as a matter of fact, it's kind of like a Mega Millions type of dollar, like a Powerball kind of number. And to one individual, that is a lot. That is a lot. But to the 30,000 students that we serve and the 4,000 employees, it doesn't go very far. And I want to talk a little bit about what that looks like today during our presentation. We are so proud of our kids. We have been doing some pretty remarkable things with our kids, whether it's Operation Warm, where we're equipping the community with winter coats, or we're banding together for hunger with our marching bands, and our schools working to do philanthropy in the community. We're pushing the cutting edge with cybersecurity technology. We are advancing our coursework where we can under very strange circumstances. This pandemic has not been kind to us, but our kids have found a way to excel, and our teachers continue to find a way to excel too. Our kids are picking up national, local, and state recognitions for their hard work, and it really is our goal, twofold, to get our kids ready for life after they leave us, but also to create those great neighbors that we want to have next door to us when they grow up. But some things have happened over the last few years, and I want to point that out. And there's always this big question when you talk about money, is whether or not the community is getting a great value for their tax dollar. And I can tell you that Stafford County gets a tremendously good value for what it spends on public education. But the question always arises is, do you share your warts or not? And tonight, I'm going to take a little bit of a risk, and I'm going to share some of our warts, because I want to be very transparent about the areas that we need to improve. And I want to be very clear about what I think it's going to take for us to get there. And so, right before the pandemic, we were performing pretty well. Not amazing, not at the top of the chart, but pretty well. I selected a handful of districts that I want to talk about. Stafford County, obviously, is a great example, right there at the top, and I've highlighted them in red. The state average of performance, and this is just SOLs, and SOLs aren't the end-all-be-all. I need to be very clear about that. It's just one indicator, but it's an important indicator for us because it gives us one snapshot of our performance. I chose Arlington because it's a school system that is the closest to us in size. It's a very different school system than ours, but it's very close to us in size. They have about 29,000 students. We have about 30,000 students. Fredericksburg City, obviously, is right around the corner. Hanover County is a school system very similar to ours in terms of its geographic diversity, in terms of its student population. It's a good match. Prince William is right around the corner, and Spotsylvania County is also a good example. And I could have probably put in Falkir County too, if I wanted to. So, taking a look at performance, you know, we were doing okay. Not great, but we were right around the state average. Where we were several years before this was actually much higher. But where we are today is pretty dramatic. And it's important that we confront this face to face. And I want to put this out there that, of course, we didn't assess history and social studies, SOLs the same way, and that content the same way that we did prior to the pandemic, but performance has changed. It's changed quite a bit. And although lots of other places throughout the state also had similar performance drops, some didn't. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out that Hanover County was in person for pretty much the entire time, and Arlington County was virtual for pretty much the entire time. And so, right before the pandemic, we were performing pretty well. Not amazing, not at the top of the chart, but pretty well. I selected a handful of districts that I want to talk about. Stafford County, obviously, is a great example, right there at the top, and I've highlighted them in red. The state average of performance, and this is just SOLs, and SOLs aren't the end-all-be-all. I need to be very clear about that. It's just one indicator. But it's an important indicator for us because it gives us one snapshot of our performance. I chose Arlington because it's a school system that is the closest to us in size. It's a very different school system than ours, but it's very close to us in size. They have about 29,000 students. We have about 30,000 students. Fredericksburg City, obviously, is right around the corner. Hanover County is a school system very similar to ours in terms of its geographic diversity, in terms of its student population. It's a good match. Prince William is right around the corner, and Spotsylvania County is also a good example. And I could have probably put in Falkir County too, if I wanted to. So, taking a look at performance, you know, we were doing okay. Not great, but we were right around the state average. Where we were several years before this was actually much higher. But where we are today is pretty dramatic. And it's important that we confront this face-to-face. And I want to put this out there that, of course, we didn't assess history and social studies, SOLs the same way, and that content the same way that we did prior to the pandemic. But performance has changed. It's changed quite a bit. And although lots of other places throughout the state also had similar performance drops, some didn't. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out that Hanover County was in-person for pretty much the entire time, and Arlington County was virtual for pretty much the entire time. So there are some interesting things there, that there wasn't a yo-yo effect of going this and that and back and forth and hybrid and not hybrid, and that certainly has paid a toll on Stafford County and many other counties. But it's up to us to look at how we can reverse this trend and how we can focus on our kids and give them not only the academic supports that they need, but also the social and emotional support that they need to be successful in our schools. There's also a little bit of a correlation between performance and money. Now, I wouldn't be doing a budget presentation if I didn't make this at least a little bit about money. And Arlington, as you can see, is right up top, and they definitely spend a lot per kid. And I'm not necessarily advocating that for Stafford County. I don't think that's a good fit for us, just to be honest. I think we could utilize our resources a whole lot better than that. But every other county comparator to us just buries us. And just even small differences have a tremendous effect on our bottom line. So that you can see the actual numbers, I thought I'd point it out to you. And there's some steep realities with this. And to spell that out even a little bit clearer, if Stafford spent the same amount on public education as Spotsylvania County, we'd have an additional 21 million to use for our classrooms. If we spent the same amount as Prince William per student, we'd have nearly 45 million. If we spent the same amount as Falkir, be closer to 82 million. Now, again, I'm not necessarily advocating for this, but in Arlington, it would be close to 300 million, which would be close to doubling our budget. Now, the funny thing about Arlington is they're the closest to us in size in the Commonwealth. And they have nearly twice the amount of money to support kids. Now, money isn't everything, and it certainly isn't the kind of budget that we're looking for and the kind of money that we're hoping to spend, not even close. I'd never make that proposition to you or to the taxpayers. But it is important for us to point out how different each of these school systems spends money and where they choose to focus and how they choose to support kids, and also what kind of performance they get in exchange. It's called return on investment. And so I also think it's important for us to talk about this wart. And that wart is that we're growing pretty quickly. And if we were to look even a few more years into the future, I know that this board would not be surprised that that bar on the right's just going to keep on going up. The reason I chose 12 years and this being the 13th year on the far right is that our kids that are entering kindergarten in the 2010, 2011 school year will be graduating next year. And my, how their school system has changed in the 13 years that they have been in Stafford County. They have added another 4,000 classmates. It's pretty dramatic. And I wonder what our entering kindergarteners next year, how much Stafford County will change during their time as well. 2010 is an interesting year for another reason, too. It's also the first fiscal year where we had a dramatic impact tied to the housing market crash. And we're going to talk about that again in a few more slides, but we haven't quite recovered from that one yet. So I want to talk a little bit about some of our needs, but I want to do it in a little bit of a roundabout way, so please indulge me. Again, we see a lot of our needs tied to recruiting and retaining great people, managing our growth, and of course, on-time transportation. I want to spend some time talking about that. But the bottom line is that our families, our students, our community not only deserves a high-quality school system, but they demand it. I think I've got a few friends here today that would agree with me.
Yes, sir.
Now, I know I'm going to get some flack for this. So, in fairness, in fairness, my wife is from Maine, and her first professional football game was the first game that Tom Brady played in as a professional athlete. So, in fairness, this is a little bit to her, but it proves a point. Tom Brady makes about $45 million a year, and per pass, he makes over $62,000 per pass. And a first-year teacher in Stafford County makes $48,000 a year. Now, that's just not a commentary on Tom Brady, or, and notice I did put him in a Patriots uniform too, and I can't get used to the new scenario at all. But it's a commentary on some of the things that we value, and it's really important that we start to look at our teachers with a different value lens and take a look at what it takes for them to survive and for them to be a part of our community and to make a dramatic impact in this community. So you would have to work for 20 years in Stafford County to even get close to what Tom Brady makes per pass. 20-year teacher in Stafford County, $61,950 in salary. And the funny part about that is, is that's Tom Brady's salary per pass, not per completion. His completion rate is only 67.5%. And I don't know about you, but I don't know if I'd be thrilled with 67.5% SOL scores like Tom Brady gets, but that's pretty tough. And so, looking at our teachers through a different lens, I think is going to be pretty important, because teacher quality is the biggest differentiator in our school system. It is the single most important factor to school improvement. You can have great everything else. If you don't have a great teacher in the classroom, you're not going to get the performance that you want. And so, we've been losing teachers at a pretty alarming rate. Now, I would make a pretty strong assertion that having some attrition is a good thing. Bringing in new ideas, welcoming in new people to the organization, that's really important. But we've been losing at a rate a little bit higher than what we should expect, and a good target for us would be somewhere in the neighborhood of around 10 or 11%. Last year, our attrition was 18.2%. And several years before that, it was pretty high too, so you can't necessarily blame the pandemic, although I'm sure that that had a role. And of that 18.2%, less than 20% of that was due to retirement. So 80% of the 18.2% was through attrition in the ranks, not retirements. Matter of fact, I think our retirement rate of that percentage was 16.7%. Substitute teachers are another big issue for us to deal with. Before the pandemic, we had a substitute fill rate of 93%. During the school year, it slipped to 83%. In real terms, what that looks like is it means that between 30 and 40 classes in our school system go unfilled, and teachers have to give up their planning periods, and other support staff have to give up their time to fill those classes. And if you're doing some quick math, my second slide in this presentation had to do with the number of schools we have and the number of campuses we have, and we have 35 campuses. So that's effectively one teacher per school per day that goes unfilled. Routinely, Friday is the highest number of requests for subs and the lowest fill rates. We're going to talk specifically about Friday when we get to our solutions. Our support staff play a critical role in helping to keep our school system going. You're going to see a pretty significant target to address some of the needs of our bus drivers, our outstanding, very hard-working and understaffed nutrition team, and our school nurses who really have been working double, triple, quadruple time over the last few years. We're very proud of them, but they are who make school possible behind the scenes. It's also a really important note that 70% of our employees are residents of Stafford County. They pay taxes here. They shop here. They're not just employees that are taking the tax dollar, they're also providing the tax dollar, and that is really, really important. We also have real issues that we're not going to go into a ton of detail about tonight, like our growing community in terms of our capital needs. We're going to talk about it in other aspects. Some of our aging buildings and the needs that happen when you have massive systems that go under, like HVAC systems, roofs, air filtration systems that need massive upgrades, and of course, our transportation system, which definitely needs change. So, I'm proposing for the board a number of things for consideration, and I've reorganized a few things for you tonight, and I want to share them with you. I have a few handouts for you, and for our viewing public, these are attached onto the board's agenda. For our audience that's in the room, we do have some paper copies, if you'd like it. We have last year's budget summary. We have this year's budget summary formatted the same way. And then I did something completely different. I formatted it the way I like it. Sorry about that. And I formatted a budget summary that looks like this, that has your revenue, something called non-discretionary expenditures, which I'm going to talk about, and then our discretionary expenditures, and then inside, a list of enhancements that could make our school system better. The last handout that I have for you is all of that in a really tight summary form, and I'll close with that handout to talk about. So let's get into what our revenue looks like. Well, the good news is that it's good news, and that we are expecting, due to a significant bump in state revenue, that we are going to expect close to $20 million, a little over $20 million at this time in our projected basic aid. And thanks to our citizens in this community that have spent their tax dollars locally, we can expect close to $4 million in local tax revenue from purchases in terms of sales tax revenue. Our county government has programmed preliminarily $8 million as a placeholder in their local budget, so that will be a county transfer. And this is all new money in addition to what our budget was funded in the previous year. And that's what our revenue picture looks like. Just so that you have a kind of a glimpse of like where our money comes from, it's about 1% comes from the federal government. About 1%, actually, a little share just right above 1% comes from local fees that we collect or small things that we might have in terms of a building rental or something along those lines, very small amount of money. But 38% comes from our local county government. It's a transfer from the local government, and 60% of our budget comes from the state. It's good to know, just to kind of put in perspective. And how we spend our money is really, really simple. And maybe this is oversimplifying it, but I'm going to make it really simple. We spend 86% of our budget on compensation and benefits. This is about the people that serve our kids. That's how we spend our money. The other portion, the other 14%, is how we keep the lights on and how we maintain our buildings and the materials and supplies that our teachers have. That's that red pie slice. And that may be an oversimplified version, but it's a good indicator of what our school system looks like. Most school systems are somewhere in the 75-ish range in terms of compensation and benefits, and they focus a little bit more on some of the stuff. We don't have a lot of money to have a lot of stuff. All of our money goes to putting a sharp teacher in the classroom and supports around that teacher so that they can do a great job. So our first big chunk that I want to focus on is our non-discretionary expense. And these are quite literally what it would take for us to do exactly what we did this year, again, next year, but with 600 more students. And it would cost us about $12 million to do just exactly what we did last year, again, next year, but with 600 more students. And what some of that looks like, and I'm not going to go line by line with this, because you have a budget work session to talk through that. But new positions for growth. You're welcoming over 600 students next year, brand new, so our student count won't be 30,000, it'll be 30,600 plus. And you will need additional personnel to support that. And so that's about 60 positions that support 600 students. That's everything from bus drivers to special education teachers to general ed classroom teachers. It's the whole gamut, okay? We also want to accommodate for new kids coming into school, and we do a per-pupil allocation to the schools so that they can have some funds for materials and supplies. That's factored in at just over a quarter of a million dollars. And then we have some contractual requirements that we hope to maintain year over year that the board has started before. A good example of that is that earlier this year in August, the board increased bus driver compensation and set a new bus driver starting salary. And in order to keep that going at its current rate, will cost 1.45 million, just to continue the things that you have already done. This board has done something miraculous that not a lot of people have ever really considered in public education, and it's really a bold thing and something you should be very proud of, which is that when there's a healthcare increase, you don't let it affect your employees on their bottom line, you take the cost and the employer's share of healthcare expense. So when you give a raise to your employees, they actually get to feel the raise, and they don't have the adverse consequence of constantly raising healthcare costs. It's a bold move. And it's also something that has a big impact, but it is also a big expense. In order to maintain these things over time, it does have a cost. There's something that I'm putting in the budget as a placeholder for future years, and I apologize that in my seventh week on the job, I haven't had a chance to unpack this as much as I'd like to. But the second-to-last bullet at the bottom is something called pay-go major maintenance. Pay-as-you-go major maintenance. We have been debt financing a lot of our major maintenance projects through our capital improvement plan. That has to stop, and we need to move forward to a place where it's something that we build into our operating budget over time. And so this is something that we should invest in by making contributions over the next several years to build up a fund where we can start dealing with some of our major maintenance issues without debt financing. This is a really smart way to handle major maintenance and a really sharp way to move our division forward so that we're not having to worry about some of those big systems going down, and oh my gosh, where are we going to find the money? Because we will have built up a fund to help support that over time and be able to manage that. If you're looking for a target of what that would look like, it's pretty expensive. People who budget properly for major maintenance should budget somewhere in the neighborhood of 2.5% of the value of all of their assets. Well, the value of all of your assets is over $700 million. So if you're doing the quick calculations in your head, that's about $20 million a year, about $18 or $19 million a year that we should be budgeting for major maintenance. We're not doing it. So we need to take a hard look at what that might look like so that we can take care of these community treasures, because our schools are community treasures. They're hubs for the community. And just to continue to keep the lights on, the utility companies are raising their rates over 6%, and so we have an anticipated increase in our utility bill. So it's a lot. So just to keep the lights on next year, in a sense, it will cost us an additional $12 The last category that I want to spend a lot of time on is our discretionary category, and this is really just the area where we have a lot of say in what we spend our money on. And I want to target really just a handful of areas. I want to target our licensed teacher compensation, and that's everybody from counselors to teachers to the folks that are working directly with our kids, and as well as our non-licensed scale and increased compensation there. I'm looking at a flat 5% increase for our non-licensed scale and our teacher scale. I'm going to get into great detail with that momentarily. I want to target substitute compensation in a pretty dramatic way. If you've ever taken an Uber on one day and the rate was a pretty low rate, and then you took the same Uber ride several days later at a peak time, you probably paid a premium price. Well, we should look at premium pricing for some of our subs on high-impact days. And so with that, we have a strategy to address our Fridays and target Fridays as a way to help increase our substitute pool and our substitute fill rate. The last bucket that I want to focus on is transportation improvements. And I think it's time that we have a school day that is long enough to accommodate a catch-up to learning that needs to occur and to replace some of the learning that never occurred or that was lost. and to replace some of the learning that never occurred or that was lost. And we're going to need some time to do that. So in order to do that, we will need to return to a three-tiered bus schedule. And that three-tiered bus schedule is part of a transportation recommendation that this board will receive at its February meeting. I will announce this again during superintendent's comments, but I'll be surveying our parents, our secondary students, and our staff as to their perceptions about the transportation schedule, their bell schedule, and the order in which schools go. And that survey will be released tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 p.m. Go into more detail about that soon. I think it's really important that we figure out a way that we can be as competitive as we can in a very competitive market during a national teacher shortage and during troubling times that we're facing right now. That top line you see is Prince William County's salary scale. The red line is Stafford County's salary scale, and the very light blue line is Spotsylvania County's salary scale. Now, it doesn't seem very dramatic, because those lines look awfully close together, but the dotted line is a new salary structure that I'm proposing for our licensed scale. This, like I said, is teachers, counselors, and instructional staff. And it is actually pretty dramatic. And I'm going to drag you back to Algebra I for a second. And I'm going to talk about slope. Because our salary scale is an issue of slope. The Prince William salary scale slopes at 3% per year after the first several years. So after the first five years, which is relatively no change, it starts to increase dramatically at a rate of 3.5%. Ours during the first 15 years hardly has any slope at all. And this is what's pretty dramatic. So what I'm proposing to the board is to have the first five years slope at 3%, to be price-competitive with Prince William, and then every year thereafter, slope at 1.5%. To give teachers hope as to what the future could be and what their potential salary could be in the future if we maintain a system like this. The board can then in the future look at how it wants to start its starting teacher salary, and what slope it wants for its wages looking forward, based on the available revenue that it has for this particular initiative. So let's take a little bit of a closer look. When we look at our current scale against our proposed scale, you'll see that it's very close together at the bottom, not quite close together at the top, but very far apart in the middle. And it's this middle portion that has been really troubling, because, and I've used this analogy before, and I think that it's relevant today. When we were going through school, our teachers were in their late 30s, on average, in terms of age. They were our parents' age. But today, our teachers are much, much younger, almost a decade younger on the average. And that's a reflection because of all of the people leaving the profession. They're not staying. And our attrition rate reflects this, and it's pretty dramatic. Our early teachers aren't staying, our mid-career teachers aren't staying. A few of our folks that are late career are staying to the end. But we do need to incentivize our great staff to stay. I think all of our community would agree that they've had pretty miraculous experiences with some really great teachers in our school system. The trick is, we got to keep them. And we've got to recruit new friends to join the team. And we have to incentivize that. So it's pretty dramatic to make the jump that I'm proposing in the middle. But I also think that it's necessary, given where we are and what we need to do to reverse attrition. So I'm offering a corrected and more competitive teacher pay scale, or instructionally licensed scale. The last section is the guts, as you say, of this document that you have before you. And it's a long list of enhancements that didn't make the budget. It's a very extensive list, as a matter of fact. And these are things that we should start thinking about as a school district over the next several years. And this list really is exhaustive. I really could have put together 20 slides just on this list of all of the wonderful, great ideas that our staff came up with for budget requests. But what it will cost us is significant. So we have to map it out over time. I promised you responsible solutions. And the most responsible solution that I can offer you is to not eat the apple in one bite. It's that we have to eat it over time, and we have to plan ahead, and we have to do this year over year to think about the future, not at one time, but thinking about it in iterative terms. So my hope is that, once we get past this fiscal year, that this is the last year that I present to you a one-year budget. And that's pretty dramatic. I'm also hoping to bring to you staffing standards that we can fulfill, that are true and honest from school to school to school. That there's consistency and parity between schools, that we account for the differences in our schools and what they need, and that we stick to it. That we start biting off some of these enhancement apples, one bite at a time. And it's not the appropriate time, because the board has a schedule for when it talks about its capital improvement plan, but rethinking how we might better serve our community and manage its growth with its capital improvement plan. And it's going to take us several months to assess where we need to go going into the fall, which is when the board adopts its capital improvement plan. Speaking of the fall, the board set forward three objectives in its budget priorities directing the superintendent. Now, I wasn't here when you all adopted those priorities, but I got to tell you, you picked three good ones. You said that the superintendent needed to address staff compensation, retention, and recruitment. You said that the superintendent in his proposed budget needed to address managing growth. And we've done that. And the superintendent needed to also take a hard look at pro-pupil expenditure. And we've done that. So I'm very pleased to bring you this budget presentation, and to bring you responsible solutions on how we might recruit and retain great people, how we might manage our growth, and how we might provide on-time transportation through a three-tiered bus system. So I have just this last handout I want to talk to you about. And I've detailed some of the changes inside the handout on the upper-left corner. And I will say this, it's got a very attractive cover. Very nice, thank you. It's too bad our student left, because she got highlighted very nicely. It's delightful cover. But I want to show you what this looks like in actual numbers on a teacher pay scale. So I have our current pay scale, and I have our proposed pay scale side by side. And I picked a year very specifically, I picked year 14. And this is a teacher with 14 years of experience this year, that at the end of it will have 15 years of experience, and will be on the scale at step 15 for next year. And the reason I picked this is because this teacher, who would have started 14 years ago with us, started right before the housing bubble burst. And instead of getting step adjustments every year, they got percentage adjustments every year. And what happened to this teacher is that several things happened to this teacher. This teacher's salary got compressed. And in addition to changes in the housing market and changes in the revenue picture locally, this was also the year that the Affordable Care Act was passed. And healthcare costs skyrocketed. So not only did our teachers experience compression in their salary, but their take-home pay became less. And over time, despite lots of great efforts from lots of great folks trying to reverse this, there hasn't been enough revenue, really until now, to take a step at how we might reverse some of that course, and how we might create some wage growth and repair some of that. So it looks pretty dramatic for that person. And it is, because they've been through a lot. And the state right now is offering an incentive, right now, in the current state's plan, of a shared expense of 5% or more for teacher increase. It's funny when governors say that they're going to increase teacher pay by 5%. What they never really tell anybody is that they are willing to pay a portion of 5%, not the whole 5%, which is always interesting. So we're starting our scale with a 5% change. And then we're going to fix that slope. And we're going to correct that scale and set a marker for how we might improve that going forward. And on the back page, I do have a little bit of contact information, which I think is helpful. Folks who think that this is a good idea, they may want to reach out. Or folks who think this is a bad idea may want to reach out too. And share with their policymakers things that are important to them. This is by no means an exhaustive list of all of the things that we could or would want to do to make our school system better. But this is a really important list. And I narrowed it down to three really top priorities. And that's where my focus is. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll stop talking, and I'll entertain any questions that the board may have, knowing full well that the board has several work sessions coming up on this topic.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Are there any questions that need to be addressed this evening? If not, I'd suggest that we send them and email them to Dr. Taylor so he can be prepared at our work session on Saturday to respond to them.
Yeah, I think so.
Dr. Taylor. That was a wow presentation.
You hired the right guy.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to citizen comments. I'm going to read our standard language here. But right now, we have 35 people who've signed up, and I believe there's more coming, more lists coming. So what I'm going to do is to call five names at a time. And if the five people can line up and come one after the other, then that will help us move more efficiently through here. And also, I want to note that the board does not respond to comments at the time of the meeting, but that staff addresses comments after the meeting. If we have your information, we will be able to respond to questions. All right. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Citizens are encouraged to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk, who is Ms. Mergo, right here. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. The chairperson reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comments to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairperson. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees, or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy 1113, Public Complaints. The three minutes is documented on the podium. There are three lights. When you start to speak, the green light goes on. After two minutes, is it one minute, the yellow light goes on. Ms. Mergo, could you stand up there so they can show them what I'm talking about with these lights? The reason this is important is because when you have one minute left to speak, the yellow light will go on. And then, when the three minutes is up, the red light goes on. Because of the number of speakers we have this evening, I'm going to ask you to stop when that red light goes on. And that is a courtesy to everyone who wants to speak. Sometimes we allow people to wrap up, or, you know, finish a statement. But with the number of speakers we have tonight, we're going to have to stick with the three minutes, exactly. We do not have a predetermined number of minutes. So anyone who wishes to address the board will have that opportunity. I'm going to call the names on the sign-up list. When we finish with those names, anyone else who wishes to address the board can come forward. And we'll have a lineup for that as well. So when one person finishes, the next one can come down. If you haven't already signed up, after you speak, there is a sign-up sheet here that we ask you to sign up. But we'll do that after you speak. Okay. All right, so far, we don't have another list, but we have 35 that have signed up here. So if you're not on the list, you can come up after we get through. The first speaker is Shannon Fingerholtz. The second is Kelly Grissom. The third is Haley Purcell. Fourth, Gary Atkins. And fifth is Jeff Russo.
My name is Shannon Fingerholtz. My husband and I, as most of the folks in this room, made the choice to send our child to public school, which is run, regulated by the county, state, and federal governments. We chose to co-raise our child with the government. Thankfully, in our country, we get to choose between public, homeschool, or private options. We thankfully are also able to stand before you, bringing issues and suggestions in how that education is handled. I appreciate the willingness and bravery of folks that share their experiences and suggestions before the board and public, even if they are different from my own. Like most reviews and stories, we hear the ones with deep emotional attachment. You all hear a lot of the exception stories. Sometimes the ones with great joy and accomplishments, more often, the ones with fear and anger. My heart sincerely goes out to those parents with fear and concern, searching for solutions for their children that have extra needs and are impacted with the COVID protocols. Those children are important. Please know that I personally don't know a parent that thinks these mitigations will or should go on forever. I wish for our community to hang on just for a while longer, for the benefit of our fellow neighbors, kids, our school staff, and completely exhausted healthcare workers. There really should be metrics set for when to start winding down these protocols, and ones for when we need to step them back up. Just being frustrated and over the whole thing while a valid emotion is not measurable. I want to express how much my child loves school, loves her teachers and the administrators. She loves seeing her friends in the classroom. I love seeing, I'm going to get emotional. I love seeing how much she learns every day, when she comes home excited about a funny story they read or what the class worked on in math. I love that children and staff from different backgrounds and religions make up her school environment. These are the things we celebrate about this school day. I want you to know, there are a whole lot of folks that you guys don't hear from that are teaching our kids not to be scared or angry, but to be considerate. Make the best of a weird situation, that sometimes new decisions need to be made, and how great it will be that one day, this will be a memory and a story of experience to tell. Trouble and challenges will always come, every year, every generation. What an excellent time to show our children how to manage those challenges with dignity, respect, hard work, resourcefulness, and with compassion, equipping them to handle the ones that will come their way. I want to thank our prior and current board and superintendent. There's so many decisions you have to make while considering risk, function of a school system, individual impact, and wildly different viewpoints. Your hard work is deeply appreciated. I want to thank the teachers. They are the warriors and caretakers on the ground every day with our children, finding the balance of differing parental opinion, fragile hearts, growing minds, and all the curriculum. We truly have some amazing folks in this county co-raising our kids. Thank you.
My name's Kelly Grissom. I'm a father to an eighth grader in Stafford County schools. I also have two grown children who are recent graduates and matriculated through Stafford County schools. I'm a retired Marine, and I'm a former federal employee. I used to work with Ms. Guy's husband, but I see she had to leave or something. Currently, I'm a contractor, part-time contractor, where I teach members of law enforcement on a weekly basis, the FBI, and Fairfax County Police Department. And for 12 years, I've been a business owner here in Stafford. I have a martial arts school that's on 610, near the Home Depot. We've been there for 12 years. And I just want to say And I just want to say very simply, that we don't want your help on the mask issue. That's it. We can decide for ourselves and our families what is safe. That's it. We don't want your help. Second issue, I got a martial arts school, I got an average class size of kids, as big as any classroom in the county. I got kids from every school in the county. Two years, while you guys have fumbled around with how to deal with this, I've had healthy kids in my school, working out, no masks, no restrictions, no mandates. Families, families managing their own risk as they see necessary. And for two years, while you guys have done this, at my school, on 610, we've had no problems. None. Not masking kids is safe. I have two years of proof. Period. Thirdly, this legal thing, I don't care. They don't care. We don't care. Everything that happened to slaves, legal. Everything that happened to Jews, legal. I don't care about legal, I don't want to hear it. What I want is morally, ethically, what's right for my kids. You can fight the legal stuff in a court system, I don't care. We pay for it, you work for us, we don't want your help on this one issue. Thank you.
Wow. Got two amazing boys right here, Patrick, sixth grade, Rodney Thompson Middle School, plays travel soccer. Finn is enjoying his freshman year at Colonial Forge High School, proud member of the basketball team. Got a husband whose job demands high level of health and fitness. I'm a personal trainer, although I really wish I had a law degree these days to fight for my children. We believe food is medicine. I use local farmers for my meat and my produce. I drive all the way to Culpeper for my raw milk share. And while we believe in balance, and we love Sam's Pizza and Taco Tuesday, we have a very holistic approach to our life. Breath is life. And as I mask my kids to send them to school, I am horrified. It goes against the core of my beliefs. We are teaching healthy children, their breath is dangerous, may bring harm to those around them. I will avoid getting into data and research. We can all find data and research, research that's going to support our beliefs. Please know that I am here tonight, representing all parents. Mask, unmask. We're just following our mama bear and papa bear guts, and the research that we're finding, and trying to do what we believe is best for our children. Parents' choice gives us all that opportunity. I'm simply a mom, who strives to raise my kids in an environment that nourishes their minds and bodies. Complying with these mask mandates will not be something that my family and I can continue to do. I can't do it. I need to be able to choose to allow them to breathe fresh air, as I believe God intended. I need to reinforce that they are young, healthy boys, with amazing smiles that should be seen and not feared. Please allow me the choice, me the choice, just me the choice, to unmask my kids. Parents, the choice. And according to Virginia Code, which I can't even believe is a code that has to be spoken, but a parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of that parent's child. I should be able to practice this right in the Stafford County Public School system, and not be forced to withdraw my kids in order to have these rights. I encourage you all to do what is right for all students, all students. And allow parent choice. Please, please stop silencing my family. I don't want to walk away from the school system. Please. Thank you.
My name is Gary Atkins. I live in Falmouth District, at Sixth Long Court. I've been a longtime resident of Stafford County, over 30 years. I'm a native Virginian. And I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to say a few things. First, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Taylor on an excellent presentation. Well done. Very clear, concise, and I think a lot of thought went into that. The other thing I wanted to talk about briefly is the rights of parents. You know, we as a country were founded on freedom and liberty. And it goes all the way back to the early days of the founding of this country, where people had the right to choose how they lived, how they raised their families, and make decisions about that for themselves. There's been a lot of discussions about the Virginia Code, and yes, it does codify the right that a parent has to make those decisions. There's been a lot of discussion about SB 1303, which directs certain things to be done. But it basically directs as far as practicable. And I would submit to you that the practicable stops at a point where you're breaking the right of the parent. So, CDC guidance is simply guidance, they are not an authoritative body to make law. They do not make rules that you can, that you have to abide by. So, with regard to 1303, it just gives you some guidance, right? That's all it does. So, going back to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Virginia, the Code of Virginia, it clearly puts the right of these decisions, for these decisions, in the hands of the parents. I also wanted to say a few things about teachers. I can think of no one, very few people who influence a kid as much as a teacher. Parents, moms, dads, grandparents, teachers, perhaps their pastors, things of that sort. But, a teacher has a lot of influence on the upbringing of a kid, in terms of his, his and her makeup, in terms of her ability to have the skills necessary to live a productive life, and to go out into this world that we live in, and be productive and happy. And so, I can remember, in my life, my first teacher was my mom, who sat me on her lap, at the age of about three, and taught me how to read all the books that I had to learn in order to be successful in first grade. I think about my first-grade teacher, who loved her teaching job so well, that she never seemed to ever want to retire. And she taught sixth grades in one room, about as big as this divider to that wall. That's dedication to teaching, and she did it for decades. And she has still an influence on my makeup and my character. High school teacher, there's one or two that stand out, so all of them, I commend them for their dedication, and hope that you guys will rescind this mask debate.
Before Mr. Russo starts his comments, come on down, I'm going to read the next five speakers. Nathan Mallory, Lisa Lineweaver, McKenna Dagel, Angela Olinick, and Jack Olinick.
Jeff Rosa, Hartwood District, proud parent of a Colonial Forge Eagle. Good evening, members of the School Board, Dr. Taylor, and my fellow parents here and at home. Since the mask mandates have dominated Stafford County schools, our community continues to be conflicted. When the School Board decided to continue selling division in the community by making a unilateral decision without parent or community input, this Board set a precedent. Behind closed doors, the Board failed to consider the legal conflict between 1303, Executive Order 2, and Virginia Code, Section 1, 240, Tac 1, the rights of parents. The legal authority under 1303 has been delegated to a non-Stafford County, non-Virginian entity, the CDC, over which Virginia government has no say. Of note, the CDC has changed their mask guidance approach 13 times since February 29, 2020. Your course of action was not prudent judgment, rather, it equated to proverbially kicking the can down the road. The CDC does not have adequate procedural safeguards, rather, they are simply making suggestions as guidance with no conclusive evidence, no true randomly controlled trials demonstrating the effectiveness of masks, and they have been discredited and contain massive confound in their study results. 1303 requirements emphasize adherence to law using statements such as "to the maximum extent practicable," applicable mitigation strategies, and reduce the transmission of COVID provided by the CDC. Public perception says you are allowing the federal entity guidance directing the opening status of our schools. Did the Board hear from the local medical community or the Virginia Department of Health regarding the impact of masks compared to the developmental delays of a child as a mitigation strategy? Did the Board consult any strategic plan off-ramps to accommodate the executive order? The answer is no. Superintendent Taylor provided guidance advising parents, they may request an exemption via collaboration with their respective school principals, yet the guidance left parents in peril this past Monday, because there was no direction on when exemptions would be approved. Is the Board prepared to re-vote on this topic, should the preponderance of exemptions be granted, allowing children to be maskless in schools? What evidence does the School Board have that the current children with an exemption are posing a threat to those wearing masks? How many children are exempt from wearing masks in a school, and how many children have caught COVID from being in school? Does the School Board have evidence that more children are getting COVID after eating lunch or doing physical education? What data is the school tracking to demonstrate children with mask exemptions are creating COVID outbreaks? Again, decisions are made with non-conclusive data. I argue the Board failed in compliance to your own bylaws under Section 1103, executing prudent judgment within the limits of the law. The Board failed to consider comment prior to the decision, and the Board failed to recognize and continue detrimental developmental effects to children, and the Board failed to be the effective leadership your constituents elected you to be. The Board must re-vote by abiding by Executive Order 2. The Executive Order isn't about removing masks for every parent or every child, it is about allowing parents to exercise their fundamental legal right, as defined by Section 240, Tac 1, rights of parents.
My name is Nathan Mallory. I'm a resident of Embry Mill, right here in Garrisonville. I'm here to voice my support for parental rights when it comes to the care of our children. This Board's vote to force masks on the children, in spite of parental choice, amounts to a power grab by local government. You do not have the authority to make health decisions for our children. I encourage each of you to listen to all the parents that came here today, took time out of their evenings to come here and share their opinions with you, they just want to have choices for their own children. And I also encourage you to reinstate parental choice for the masks. I also want to convey that we're all very proud of the votes that Representatives Maureen Sigmund and Alyssa Halsted took on this issue.
Good evening, Stafford County Board members, and welcome to our relatively new Superintendent, Dr. Taylor, and newly-elected School Board members. My name is Lisa Lineweaver. I hold a Master's in Science. I'm a mother of three, a graduate of Stafford County Public Schools, and a citizen of Stafford County, not to be confused with a quote-unquote "subject" of Stafford County. In the past, we had a king presiding over the people before the American Revolution. Our Pledge of Allegiance says, "To the Republic for which it stands." A republic is a form of government in which supreme power is held by the people and their elected representatives. The responsibility of whether we as citizens decide if our children wear a mask lies with our parents and guardians, not with elected bureaucrats. We elect our representatives to serve the will of the people and not to rule over them. Having been a military wife for 18 years, I can assure you that freedom isn't free. There's been bloodshed and personal sacrifice to preserve our freedoms here at home. I'm a stay-at-home mom now, and I have not had to wear a mask often. However, our youngest son, who's in middle school, has sensitive skin like me, and is developing scars on his upper cheekbones from the masks. He's a straight-A student and likes to lean on one hand when he's focusing in class, as many students do. Our oldest son has no scars, as he attended Liberty University Online Academy for one year, and just completed pre-calculus and skipped half of 11th grade. He just returned to public school the first week of this January, so he does not have any scars on his face yet. Like the boys, my husband is also gifted. He had to work late and asked me to share this quote-unquote, "I do not care who wears a mask, but what I am concerned about is biological boys going into girls' restrooms and raping girls, which has happened in Loudoun County." The Supreme Court of Virginia will soon be deciding whether Governor Youngkin's executive order to allow parents to make decisions on whether their child wears a mask in school is constitutional. In New York, the State Supreme Court judge has already ruled the mask mandate unconstitutional and declared it null, void, and unenforceable. Here in Stafford County, we ask that today, you overturn the recent School Board vote to mandate the continued wearing of masks for our students, staff, and visitors, despite the fact that we have readily available vaccines for anyone who chooses to get one. And to also pass a protect every child policy regarding student restrooms, locker rooms, and overnight field trip accommodations. We need to focus on school safety in restrooms and on education. May constitutional governance continue in this great nation we call the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, let freedom ring.
My name is McKenna, and I'm in fourth grade at Rocky Run. I feel like it is important for you to hear math, what masks are like, from a kid's point of view. I used to really enjoy school, then COVID happened. Since coming back to school this year, each day has been harder than the last. You see, for us kids, none of this makes sense. And I feel like you have not listened to us. I want you to know how hard this has been on me and other kids. Since September, I've been trying my best, but to be honest, I just can't breathe in my mask. And it makes me feel bad. It makes me feel really stressed out. The mask gets hot, sticky, and wet in just an hour. There are a lot of kids, like my brother, who have autism, and masks are just too much for them. But because of your rules, they can't even be able to take them off when they have a disability, which makes wearing it bad for them. Do they not matter? Also, if the mask works to keep you safe, then we won't make anyone not wear one. But masks make some of us feel really bad. How come our feelings and disabilities don't matter, but your opinion does? Governor Youngkin says in his order that our parents, and they are the real bosses of us, should get to make the choice about what is best for us. There are options for everyone of school age. If you are scared or worried about COVID, then you have the option to wear a mask. A free vaccine is available. If these things are forcing on people work so well, then trust them to work for you, and let me breathe. Trust my mom and dad to know what is right for me.
Angela Olinick, second Vice Chair of the Stafford Republican Committee. Last Thursday, this School Board met and voted 5 to 2 to continue the current mask mandate and prevent parents from making decisions about the care and welfare of their children when in Stafford County school buildings. As they say, "Follow the money." The school, the county is receiving millions of dollars of funding from the federal government under the American Rescue Plan titled Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. The program is sending billions of dollars across the nation, but in order to continue to receive these funds, states must submit a school district plan every six months through September 2023, showing they are fulfilling the following requirements for this S.R. money: universal masking, contact tracing, quarantine, isolation, and vaccination for all students, staff, and teachers. Those of you that voted to continue absurd mandates are clearly in vehement opposition to your sworn oath. In fact, by issuing this illegal edict, you are knowingly and willingly implementing a stall tactic that is perpetuating irrational fear, violating our rights, and ignoring the actual science and data that is in direct conflict with your current position. The recent actions by some on this Board, and the disrespect shown to include unmet promises and disingenuous posturing, have completely eroded the trust and confidence of your constituency. Additionally, the result of that breach has reached the highest level of government in Virginia. Tragically, as a result of that broken trust, what is our children, what our children will know and remember about you, they will remember those of you who were reckless, by your reckless actions stole from them a portion of their childhood, and usurped a promising productive future, thus causing them great anxiety, depression, and loneliness. They will know that in the face of overwhelming evidence, this, to this fact, you doubled down and caused despair to become so intense that many children will have taken their own lives. The damage these decisions and policies have caused, and will continue to cause, is irreparable. In fact, I consider it a catastrophic moral crime against our children that eventually you will have to answer for. In contrast, here's what our children will know and remember about us. They will know and remember, we love them, value them, honor them enough to stand and fight for their rights, the safety, and quality of life. They will remember- They will remember that we stood in the face of overwhelming criticism, threats, manipulation, lies, bully tactics, and fear mongering, and fought the good fight for them. And no matter what happens, we are not intimidated, we are not going away, we refuse to be silent under law and order is restored. To conclude, we are calling for immediate re-vote, demand the county stop relying on ESAR funding immediately. Thank you, Ms. Sigmund and Ms. Halsted, for your support.
Before the next speaker begins, I'm going to call the next five names. Courtney Downing Bozarth, William Darinns...
Willa.
Oh, Willa, I'm sorry. Willa Darins, Amy Hines, Jason Kaiser, and Catherine Snyder.
My name is Jack Allonick. Can Governor Youngkin's Executive Order Number 2 be enforced in light of the Senate Bill 1303? Yes. EO 2 allows for parents to opt out of any mask mandates in schools. EO 2 also invokes the Parental Rights Act. Both the Parental Rights Act and SB 1302 are current laws in Virginia. The Virginia Parental Rights Act provides that parents have a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of their children. The statute became effective July 1, 2013, and has no expiration date. SB 1303 provides that each school board shall provide in-person instruction in a manner that adheres to the maximum extent practicable any applicable mitigation strategies for elementary schools and secondary schools to reduce the transmission of COVID-19 that had been provided by the CDC. This was an act approved on March 30, 2021, expires on August 1, 2022. It's not codified in Virginia code. Do CDC guidelines contain a mask mandate for elementary and secondary schools? No, it does not. CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all students ages 2+. An order issued by the CDC on January 29, 2021 requires masks be worn while in public transportation. Per CDC guidelines, universal indoor masking is a recommendation, not a requirement. School divisions are called to uphold parental rights, to make decisions concerning their care of their children, and to adhere to CDC guidelines to the maximum extent practicable. The primary objective of statutory construction is to ascertain and give effect to legislative intent. Senator DuNevant introduced SB 1303. She recently released a statement regarding the intent interpretation of the law. The senator stated that SB 1303 has been used against its intent this school year. It does not mandate the use of masks in schools because CDC does not mandate masks. Further, she stated EO 2 does not ban masks, it gives parents options, just like SB 1303 does not mandate masks, it gives school boards a roadmap to keep schools open. The obvious and rational meaning of the statute should be followed. The language in 1303 and the Parental Rights Act is plain and clear. Apply CDC guidelines as much as practicable, and parents will make decisions regarding the care and education of their children. When two statutes are in apparent conflict, the Virginia Supreme Court directs that they should be construed, if reasonably possible, to allow both to stand and give force and effect to each. Reading the CDC recommendation as a requirement and SB 1303 as requiring it to be implemented without limitation is an attempt to nullify the Parents' Rights Act with respect to masks. The statement to the maximum extent practicable limits the implementation of CDC guidelines when they infringe upon applicable and valid current laws in Virginia. It is possible to harmonize SB 1303 with Parental Rights Act by maintaining the universal masking policy with a parental opt-out. That's the key. This is possible and reasonably achievable. The Virginia principles of statutory construction instruct school boards to do so.
My name is Courtney Downing, and I'm a parent of two very smart and beautiful children that attend Stafford County Public Schools. My daughter Willa here is here with me tonight. She's a brain cancer survivor. She maintains a straight A average while struggling with many disabilities. The mask you are forcing her to wear is physically and mentally affecting her. Since you are deciding fear over facts, I am thinking homeschool may be the only safe option. It seems that most of you believe I should not have parental rights. That or your lawyer's opinions have swayed you to believe this to be true. Makes sense why Spotsylvania School Board did not trust that lawyer. I'm disappointed, disgusted, and discouraged. One thing I do know for certain is I will do what I feel is best for my children, just like I would want each and every one of you to have that same choice. I'm an artist, and I love to write, so I decided to write a poem to try to convey my feelings in a positive manner. Undisputable science that says this is the only way, this is not okay. Innocent children wearing a cloth mask eight-plus hours a day, this is not okay. Running in PE, faces covered, not able to breathe. Kids are resilient, you say. This is not okay. Suggestions from the CDC now dictate our lives. Our kids are suffering, this is the price. Masks do more harm than good, it should be a choice. Forcing our children to wear them against their will, you have stolen their voice. Stop this insanity, do the right thing today. Truth and freedom for all, this is what I pray. Thank you.
Lisa, how do you feel?
Hello, my name is Willa Downing, and I'm a freshman at Brookpoint High School. I am a brain cancer survivor. We found it through my eyes when I was five years old, and I've had vision impairments and sense impairments ever since then. And wearing a cloth mask over my face has really made it difficult to navigate and just live my life. I have a hard time walking through the hallways at school. I have a hard time going downstairs. They say that I can pull it below my nose, but that's not very much different because it's still affecting my senses. And I've tried to communicate with my teachers and my caseworkers, but they just don't seem to listen to me, so I came here today hoping that somebody would.
Hi, my name is Amy Hines, and I'm a parent of four children, and I'm a wife of a teacher in Stafford County. I was a teacher myself. I now homeschool my daughter. Two of my children have special needs, and I love seeing your face and your smile. And my children with special needs, they need to see people's faces. We adopted them at age of five and a half and six years old, so they're already developmentally delayed because of being in an orphanage in Ukraine. And then to come here and have teachers have masks on their faces and not be able to read expressions. And my son also has autism, and he's afraid of medical places like doctor's offices. And then with all these people with masks on, imagine, he feels like he's not in a safe place, that he's going to be hurt. I'm also here to talk about my husband, who teaches and, you know, in a mask all day. He can't communicate with his students, he has a hearing loss, it's hard to hear what kids are saying. It's hard to read people. At the end of the day, he's exhausted because he's trying to exert his voice to be heard. It sounds like Charlie Brown when you're trying to talk through a mask. Charlie Brown's teacher. Valuable time is spent trying to communicate through the masks. I'm here for the teachers and for the people, the staff. They need to be unmasked as well. You talk about budget. What is the cost that these masks are having on our children and our teachers? Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Give the rights back to parents, unmask our children, and let our teachers also be unmasked. Thank you.
I want to echo the gentleman's comments earlier. You did a great job on your brief, by the way. Stafford County Board, Dr. Taylor. My name is Jason Kaiser, and I live in the Acquired District. Come here tonight, exercise my civic right and responsibility to address you elected school board members. I'm deeply concerned about this board's actions on January 20, 2022, when you held an emergency meeting followed by a vote to defy Governor Youngkin's Executive Order Number 2, which reinforces parents' rights to determine what is best for their child. This includes a parent's choice to have their child wear a mask in publicly funded schools. I request this board listen to the parents, get a second legal opinion, and take another vote. This board kicked the can down the road December 14 and again on January 7, citing the reason for allowing public comment before taking a vote on the mask mandate. This was a deceptive action taken by this board to subvert any parental input during public comment, period. Hiding issues of such importance to parents and taxpayers, calling to question your actions and the trust that we should have in you. I'm truly shocked at the fact that there are academic doctorates as well as other educated members on this board, and yet you are unable to find a single solution to this issue. It's as though you've suspended critical thinking. Last week, I attended Dr. Taylor's Listen and Lesson and Learn session, and Executive Order Number 2 was briefly discussed. Afterwards, I met a parent who was concerned about mask removal. It's a legitimate concern, but she and I were able to discuss mitigation strategies that fit both her desire to keep her child safe and for me to keep my child breathing freely and going back to her normal life. It truly seemed like we, as parents, could figure this out. I'm just not sure why this board is unable to do so and instead hid behind a state law that does not mandate masks but references CDC recommendations, which are also not mandating Now, you truly contradict yourselves when you allow exemptions to the mask mandate, now minus the religious and medical issues. But you have kids blowing instruments inside school, you have kids playing sports without masks. That is completely contrary to forcing children to wear masks inside schools. I just wonder if this is about federal funding identified as COVID relief funds. Can you tell the citizens of Stafford County that forcing children to wear masks is not about money? Are you selling our children to the federal government? Is this masks for money? Now, I just didn't come here to complain, I have a reasonable solution. Developing a phased approach to removing masks, that's fine. You know, give folks the opt-out option. Start with 10% of each class population, let those kids not wear masks. Then, after a couple weeks, reevaluate the situation, unmask more children, that's fine. Come up with a solution so that our kids can continue to learn in schools that we pay for. Now, I repeat my request. I want this board to listen to parents, get a second legal opinion from a neutral firm, not somebody who's biased. Take another vote, because I guarantee you this, that you will forever be known by how you address parental rights.
Before you start, I want to call the next five. That would be Julius A. Jackson, Margaret Lowery, Carol Lyscher, Eliza Chinivon, and the Alsop family.
Catherine Snyder in the George Washington District. Before I start, I'd just like to say, when you guys talk with masks and I watch at home, I have no idea what half of you are saying half of the time. And so, but now I'll just give my marks. At the August 21 meeting, the lawyer told you guys about SB 1303. I went back and listened to this meeting. My takeaway from the meeting was you could force our kids to wear masks or not, you could get sued either way, but you'd be fine either way, no matter what you chose. Even the most ardent forced maskers did not mention SB 1303 is a reason enough to force our kids back in August. You were talking about caseloads, and the decision was pushed. Then Northam's executive order came out before your planned September meeting, so you guys said, the ones that were on there, said, "Oh, well, the executive order, now we don't have to think about it, that's why we're masking your kids." If the board had said in August, "We're sorry, guys, this school year is masked due to SB 1303, this wouldn't be an issue today," but that is not what you guys did. You let the executive order be the reason our kids were forced to wear masks. I am asking to see the mask removed not only for our students, staff, teachers, visitors, basically anyone in the school buildings. I was volunteering at my child's school, but after that decision, I was so disgusted by your decision. I was, I'm done. I'm not going to volunteer at my child's school until I don't have to wear a mask at that school. I'm also asking, as a taxpayer, that we get our money back for the legal fees, because you either got bad advice in public back in August, or you got bad advice behind closed doors in January. I don't know which, apparently was the same lawyer. Or go for a second opinion to figure out which of her opinions was bad. But please remember, there is a reason the lawyers are only your counsel, and they offer advice, and they are not tasked with making any decisions. If you are just going to blame her for your decisions, there's no reason for us to even have a board. Just have the lawyer issue opinions. And if you decide that SB 1303 is the guidance that we are going to follow, that tells you to listen to the CDC as practicable. As you decide which guidelines are practicable, please remember that the CDC says we're better off being treated by a COVID-positive healthcare worker than we are being treated by an unvaccinated healthy healthcare worker. And that is why you have guidelines, and they're not absolutes, because obviously they issue bad ideas, not the least of which is don't eat raw cookie dough. Thank you.
Julius Jackson, Hartwood District. I don't know how I'm going to follow some of these people, because mine's probably going to sound a little more boring. In short, I am here to implore you to comply with Executive Order Number 2. Constitution of Virginia empowers the executive to make decisions, and executive orders carry force of law, period. Just as it gives the governor under emergency powers, executive orders are law. It's in there. So by breaching and making your decision to go against the executive order, you're breaking the law. You're trying to hide behind 1303, but it's not supportable, because either what Governor Northam did through his actions would be illegal, as would this executive order, or they're both legal. You're wrong, you got it wrong. I implore you to fix that. Okay? So under 1303, follow the best mitigation strategies. CDC recommendations are only that. Recommendations carry no force of law. The other thing I want to say is shame. You talking about staff problems? You threw your administration under the bus. I showed up on Monday with other parents at my school, walked my son in. I had him put on his mask because I believe we follow the legal process, but you didn't. You hit a vote behind closed doors without parental input, and you put your administration in a bad, bad spot. My principal felt so poor at having to explain to the parents why their kids still had to wear masks. I saw one member there, one member, my member. How many of the rest of you went out and supported your school administrations and explained to the parents why you're refusing to follow the law? We're supposed to be example for our children, right? You're not setting a good example if you are not willing to follow your duty obligation and responsibility to follow the law. You're teaching them it's okay to selectively follow the laws and the executive orders. Should they do that with our school administration and staff and class? I'm not going to follow the code of conduct, I don't feel like it? I don't think so. I implore you, have a re-vote and comply with the Executive Order Number 2. It is lawful. If you think it's not lawful, then wait for it to go through the court system. It cannot be vacated simply because there is litigation pending. It's not, it doesn't work that way. You can't refuse to comply with it because you don't like it. Without the court issuing a stay, it is in effect, period. It is in effect. You need to reconsider, you need to do the right thing.
Good evening, members of the school board and Superintendent Taylor. My name is Margaret Lowery. I'm a resident of the Rock Hill District, and I am a former teacher, counselor, and administrator in the Stafford County Schools. Not here to talk about the mask tonight. I'm here to urge you to focus on equity and parity in the athletic facilities in our five high schools. I know you've heard me before, but I'm going to tell you again, specifically the fact that Brookpoint, Stafford, and Mountain View have had artificial turf stadium fields for the last seven and eight years. With the exception of the spring of 2020, when the pandemic caused us to have to cancel activities, North Stafford and Colonial Forge have each spent at least $25,000 annually to purchase paint, grass seed, fertilizer, turf, and radiation to purchase paint, grass seed, fertilizer, turfis, aeration services, and to rent turf fields at Smith Lake and Embry Mill. For the past seven and eight years, each of the other three high schools have had almost $200,000 more because they're not having to fix their stadium fields, to spend on other athletic fields, equipment, and to maintain the cost of their turf field. There is no charge. We cannot continue to allow such financial inequity. The figure does not even include additional revenue lost when North and Forge home games have to be moved to another school's field in the district because they have turf, nor does it include the additional stress placed upon the students, staff, parents, and transportation department who must make last-minute changes to the already overwhelming schedule. Now, I know tonight's probably not the night to bring up budget, but I am urging you to work with the Stafford County Board of Supervisors and fund the funds to install artificial turf at North Stafford and Brookpoint, and, woo, North Stafford and Colonial Forge in 2022, 2022 this year. And I do want to just say thank you for choosing to serve Stafford County. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, members of the School Board, and Dr. Taylor. My name is Carol Lyscher, and I reside in the George Washington District. I retired as an instructional coordinator in the central office and currently volunteer at North Stafford. I am here again to follow up on the parity issue of not being afforded the same quality competition turf fields that exist in three of our county high schools for the last seven or eight years. I commend the School Board for authorizing the funds for the design work for turf at North Stafford and Colonial Forge this past summer. Knowing that the design team had been at our school was a big boost as we carried on the season with a grass stadium field. But it was such a blow towards the end of the season when it was shared that the turf was not happening anytime soon. We ended up doing our research, and the newest and current CIP did confirm two turf fields are now listed for the 2024 budget. In digging further, the previous CIP for 2018 to '27 listed the Colonial Forge to be slated for turf in 2019, and North was slated for 2023. It didn't make sense to me that North Stafford, the oldest high school in the county, was scheduled for the last turf installation, and Colonial Forge installation date for 2019 didn't even happen. High School Number Six is currently being planned and is scheduled to open its doors in 2025. I have to say, it's an exciting time to be forging ahead for a much-needed high school. I can only expect that the High School Number Six will have a high-quality turf stadium field. It was the accepted field installation for the new Stafford High School rebuild way back in 2014. In closing, I need to leave each of you with this question that has come up in conversations with other stakeholders. Will the newest high school, Number Six, open up with a quality turf stadium field before North Stafford and Colonial Forge get their recommended turf installations? This School Board needs to work together with the people across the street, the Board of Supervisors, to find the money to achieve parity in our school stadiums now. We want and we need your support in upgrading for equity in the county high schools and equity for your student athletes. Please fix this parity issue in 2022 before the new high school construction even begins. Thank you for the time.
My name is Elizabeth Chinivon. I sent you guys two emails this past week. Neither one of them were very nice. One of them was the alternate legal opinion that was read tonight. I hope that you had time to consider it, considering it made a lot of sense. Both the EO and all of the Virginia state laws can be implemented simultaneously. By the way, everybody here has a copy if they want it. The second email contained a video from an organization called Tennessee Liberty Network. I recommend everyone look that up. They explain very clearly how federal money is being used against the American people in schools and in hospitals. The bottom line is you guys have sold us out. In order to accept federal funds, you in turn promised to keep our kids in masks, quarantined, isolated, and even vaccinated. Thank God we have a constitution. I want you to know that I have an army of parents working to uncover how much money has been granted to Stafford County Public Schools through COVID relief and other grants. And we want to know exactly how it's being spent. We are also exploring all avenues of legal action. Until now, Virginia courts have refused to hear any COVID-related cases, but with the new administration in Richmond, that's all about to change. So ask yourself, what will this country look like in 10 years if we continue to mask our children? You have a role to play in this war on America. What's that role going to be? What do you want your legacy to be? What difference does any of this make? What difference does anything we do in our lives make if we can't pass our children a free country? Parents cannot afford to let this fight go. America cannot afford to let this fight go. You need to immediately call for a new vote, adhere to the laws and the Constitution, and make masks a choice for parents, only parents, to be able to make for their own children. Oh, and Dr. Chase, if you are so concerned about bringing teachers to Stafford, you should remove the masks for her as well.
Excuse me, we don't have directions to individual.
Okay. You should still remove the masks for teachers. You'd get a lot more substitutes.
Before you start, I'm going to call the next five. That's okay. The next speaker after the Alsop family is Gina Searcia, Jogi Fagan, Lucy Chinivon, Kelly Loines, and Greg Dunay. No, you're next. The Alsop family.
Good evening. Brian Alsop, and this is my daughter Mica. We're lucky to be in Alyssa's district. I'm here because my daughter asked me to come here. An eight-year-old asked to come address those that are not letting her go to school on Monday and forcing her to wear a mask. So I will ask her a couple of questions. Mica, do you have anything you'd like to say to them?
Yes. I think it's hard for us to listen and learn because the masks are hard to focus with because it's not doing what the school was built for. If we're not doing what it was built for, what's the whole point of it?
Would you like to say, would you like to say anything about the kids that are in your class?
I think they're a little nervous to stand up for them, so I'm standing up for them. And whoever's watching, I want them to know I'm standing up for them.
The last question for Mica, and then I'll give my opinions. As you're well aware, we attempted to go to school on Monday. How did Monday make you feel?
I felt a little bit sad because I didn't get to go to school and see my friends.
Good. Okay. I'll use my last 90 seconds to talk about opinions. So you've heard plenty of opinions today. I would, I would ask that you remember that those are opinions. I suspect during the closed-door meeting that we were not a part of that a single lawyer gave you her opinion. I think that you should consider that that person may also have an agenda that has gone through, and I would ask you to have the courage to motion for another vote tonight and realize that one single opinion does not contradict the entire district that's here. I'd like to say that let's get back to normal learning. Thank you.
So the Bible tells us that from the mouth of babes comes wisdom. She actually stole my thunder because she made several points that I was getting ready to make. My name is Gina Searcia, and I am running for Congress here in our new Seventh Congressional District. So I am here standing up for everyone in the Seventh Congressional District, particularly the parents. I'm the mom of five, and I too am a teacher. I've been involved in education for over 20 years. Education has made really big headlines, particularly this past year in 2021, and it will continue to do so. Education is more than just a transmission of knowledge. And like the little girl said, if we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing at school, then what's the point anyway? Education is not just about learning the facts, but it's forming the child. It's developing character and intelligence. It's teaching that child a worldview and their place in the world, and it is transmitting, hopefully, our American culture and values. And the way that we educate defines who we are as a people and who we will continue to be as a people. Mask mandates have caused great upheaval, fear, helplessness, anger, bitterness, frustration, and harm. Long ago, I'm a history teacher, so long ago, there was a great Athenian patriot named Demontesanese who cried out to his countrymen when they seemed to be confused and divided that they needed to stand against tyranny. And he said to them, and this is what I say to you, in God's name, I beg you to think. Think. I'm a teacher. I've interacted with many students. They don't even wear the mask properly. Okay? They don't. Basic understanding of germ theory can tell you that a cloth mask is ineffective, and it's even less effective when the kid is not wearing it properly. Too much harm has already been done to our children. This whole issue with masks is a distraction. COVID is now in the endemic stage. It's here to stay. It is yet another pathogen that the human race will encounter regularly. It's time to live normally with COVID in the picture. Teaching is the most noble profession. Stop sullying it by promoting fear and tyranny and trampling the rights of these parents.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Taylor. My name is Jodi Fagan. It's a new day in Virginia, and the parental rights of its citizens have been restored. It would benefit the School Board to recognize this fact sooner rather than later. The citizens of this county, primarily the parents, desire to have a transparent relationship with the School Board for the sole purpose of serving the greater good for the children, our children. Recent actions and unmet promises by this Board have proven otherwise. It appears that the Board adopted a legal opinion. The EO Two is somehow superseding SB 1303. It's not. Simply put, SB 1303 requires each School Board to offer in-person instruction to students enrolled in a local school division. EO Two is about parental rights, which amplifies the tenets of the Parental Rights Act. In fact, the word mask does not show up anywhere in SB 1303. Additionally, the reference to the CDC in SB 1303 only enforces the disconnect with EO Two. The CDC continues to recommend wearing a mask. EO Two allows parents to opt out of a mask mandate in schools. In other words, not accept the recommendation. Bottom line, the government is not on your side, the governor is not on your side, the lieutenant governor is not on your side, the AG is not on your side. At least 75% of the citizens in this county are not on your side. The law is not on your side. It is clear to all that this is stall tactic, the Board deferring the action to follow the law and lawful executive order. This clearly illustrates that it is not about the safety of our children and has not been for a long time. The true crime here is our children are being used as political pawns. You were willing to grant us an opt-out in September when the mask issue was to be revisited until Governor Northam set forth the mandate, which we reluctantly abided by. And now you are unwilling to abide by Governor Yonkin's executive order. COVID is not hurting our children. You are. I ask for a revote tonight. Thank you.
My name's Lucy, and I don't agree with masks. And I could give you facts, but you guys don't listen to it anyway.
Lucy, could you pull that microphone down so we can hear you better?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. I can't breathe with it when I wear it to school, so I pull it down, and then I get yelled at. So every day I have to pick either if I want to stand up for my freedom or if I want to focus on school. And that's, no one in America should ever have to make that decision. So when I ask them why I'm getting yelled at, then they just say it's not my decision. It's what I'm told to do. So, and so did you know that 60 million Jews died in Nazi death camps and 1,000 Germans worked there? So then there's a relation between their two excuses because every day they just went home and they just said they were just doing their job. So in 30 years from now, could you say that you did everything you could to keep America free? Because I know only two board members could say that because they took the roadless, traveled, and they didn't take the easy way out like some other people did. And so I ask you to revote, and while you're revoting, ask yourself if you want to be a patriot or a traitor. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Loines, and I'm from the Rock Hill District, and I'm here to talk about parental choice. At this time, it's pointless to talk about the data and science of masking since many of you willfully ignore the detriments of masking and continue to hide behind a law that has nothing to do with mask requirements. Each of you knows that Senate Bill 1303 was never written nor ever intended to be a mask mandate. If it was, then former Governor Northam would not have instructed former Health Commissioner Norm Oliver to make a second one. For you to sit here and say that Senate Bill 1303 is anything other than a requirement for in-person instruction is disingenuous and false. The parental, the right of parents, a parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child. No one here is more qualified than a parent to make any and all decisions regarding their children. For example, my daughter is neurotypical and in the Focus Program. My son is autistic and in the Special Needs Program. At no point in time are their needs ever the same. At no point in time do I ever make a unilateral decision regarding their care, medical, educational, or otherwise. That would be ridiculous concerning, considering that their needs are so different. What you're doing is ridiculous by making a unilateral decision for every child in this school system. You do not know each child and what they need to have a successful learning environment. Parents do, and we have been telling you for two years, and you refuse to listen. Why? No one is asking you to make a unilateral decision banning masks. We are asking you to respect our rights codified in Virginia law to have a choice in the education of our children, our right to choose what is best suited to meet our children's needs. Parents know best. You do not. Support parental rights and parental choice. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, I'm going to read the next five. Gary Thibodeau, Bill Anderson, John, I'm going to ask the, some assistance on this one here. It's, it looks like it's H A.
Oh, X or something.
T Z B? Okay. Sorry about that.
And also Dan McLeese. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, thank you. Good evening, Board. Dr. Taylor, thanks for being here. I too, Greg Denay here, Rock Hill district. I'm here to object to the mask mandate as well. Before I get started, let me thank you for all the work you guys do behind the scenes. Take a break from the mask for a second. I know it's hard. There's a lot of hard work, and a lot of it goes unnoticed, but thank you for that. This issue, though, is easy. You can fix it tonight. I hope you will. Let me start, I want to read a paragraph that represents my opinion. I didn't write this. This was written by Dr. Lee Merritt, published in the Journal of American Physicians and Surgeons, winter of last year. This is about a year old, but it's an opinion piece, just a summary. Quote, "There are at least 18, there are, at last count, 18 controlled studies of mask wearing, none showing benefit in diminishing transmission of small particle-sized airborne viruses. Most recently, U.S. Marines in quarantine barracks wore masks, practiced social distancing, and disinfected the environment. They were supervised by other Marines to ensure compliance. Masks were worn when not eating or sleeping. The study was published in what's supposed to be the world's premier medical journal, the New England Journal of Medicine. Predictably, these measures failed to decrease the transmission of COVID." So that pretty accurate representation of my informed opinion, because I read smart people, so that's where I'm at. We all, we all have opinions on this matter. I get it. Masks are not banned by this executive order. They are simply made, it's putting the authority back where it belongs, in the hands of the parents. We should not need an executive order to give parents decision authority on masks on their kids. We already have that authority. This board needs to recognize that, and I hope you will do that tonight. You know, I understand the board, we've talked a lot about opinions, legal opinions, and many others have said it. It's an opinion. Watched the Virginia Attorney General on the news today. He had a very different opinion. He supports parents having this authority back. The board has wide discretion to interpret this executive order and existing law. It's your, it's your decision. It's not that lawyer's. Okay? The shuttering of schools, churches, and businesses happened by executive order, certainly not rooted in the Virginia or U.S. Constitution. These actions were taken because we didn't know details of this pandemic, and it made sense at the time, for a temporary time period. It was supposed to be 15 days, if you remember those days. We're two years into this. It's time to do what makes sense now, reverse course, end this mandatory mask policy, recognize that parents have the authority to make this decision. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm Gary Thibodeau. I'm a father of three that are hitting the Stafford County, Stafford schools right now. I came up here prepared to read much of what you've already heard. Masks don't freaking work. And every time I see one of those spittle-soaked, bacteria-infected face diapers, it just infuriates me, because everybody knows it's only hurting you, and that's it. And that brings me to another thought. So I've served the majority of my life in a couple of different capacities. One way was in the Boy Scouts, watching my son come up from a Cub Scout. I was a Dun Leader, I was a Weevils Leader. I later, when we went to the troop, I served on the troop committee until I was asked to be a scout master. I taught my scouts honor, integrity. I taught them, just like it says in the Good Book, "Let your yes be yes and your no be no." The mask is a lie, and you present it every single time you strap it on. And you're making our children do the same thing. You know, I don't need these. I also served in the United States Army, 27 and a half years. I joined in 1988, and I retired in 2015, a Green Beret. The men I served with, and what we fought for, it was to keep this from our shores. I stand here now, and there you are. And it does infuriate me. Let me tell you. You've got a choice to make. It needs to be a good one. You owe us, because let me tell you what. The brothers and sisters that didn't come back with me, or came back changed. They did not fail this country or this community. You did.
Bill Anderson, Fountain District. I'd like to start by thanking my school board representative for a phone call earlier today. While there are some areas that we massively disagree on, I appreciate your willingness to have an extremely cordial conversation about the situation. Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board, I would like to first address some unaddressed behavior from last week. A former school board member who sat on this board for several years and at numerous times asked people to respect the decorum of the board and not react to words of the school board. However, last week, when you moved to maintain your mask policy, she reacted for the sake of making her stance known to the people in the audience by standing and saying, "Thank you, Jesus," and walking out. She then re-entered less than a minute later. This was a demonstration act that went unaddressed by this board. However, when another member of the audience asked to be heard on this matter, he was told that he needed to be quiet. Just in case you've forgotten, that board member is no longer on this board, and I am requesting that the school board treat her as any other attendee would be, and if she cannot maintain decorum, then she should ask to leave as well. Onto the issue at hand. On August 4th of 2021, the school board, which included several members of the current board, discussed how the school district would handle masks in school. At the time, it was asked for the mask to be optional by parents, and this board said that it could not do that if the governor put an executive order into place, because you didn't have the right to go against that. Members of the board, what is different now under a new governor that you have decided you do have that right now? Furthermore, on that day, another school board member asked if, under the law, could the school board be sued if a child within the school district dies of COVID and you had not followed the law? The response from legal counsel in open forum on August 4th was, "No, I do not believe you could be sued because you have sovereign immunity." Members of the board, has something changed from the legal guidance you were given before? Finally, every member of this board that voted to continue this violation of parental rights stated that the law requires the following CDC, the following of CDC guidelines. I couldn't agree more. What in fact is the guideline? Recommends masks. I don't feel like I need to define what recommend means, but maybe I have to. A local principal sent out an email to staff within the last week stating that if you're unhappy with the policy, you should contact your legislative representative and let them know. That is what we did by voting for a new governor. COVID is not going away, but eventually we have to get back to letting parents make parental choices and make the decisions that are best for their children. Earlier this evening, I heard under the superintendent's budget that Hanover County is one that is comparable to us and that we're behind them. Hanover County voted yesterday to remove masks. This is another area we're behind them.
Let me adjust this a little bit. Dr. Taylor and school board, good evening. My name is John Hanses, and I live in the Rock Hill district. I'd like to start by saying hello to Dr. Taylor. I think it's really neat that you're traveling the county to meet with people. I heard you went to a Moms for Liberty meeting, which I think is really awesome, to bridge the divide between parents and administration. It really takes guts to face constituents that may have different political beliefs than yours, and for that, I sincerely thank you. I'd also like to thank Ms. Sigmund and Ms. Halsted for the vote last week. There must have been a lot of pressure from unelected bureaucrats to compromise your morals, and you didn't do that. Both of you really have guts and bravery. However, I must say this. It appears to me that guts, bravery, and willingness to listen to constituents is something particularly lacking among other members of this board. Firstly, I was truly, I was appalled that the school board usurped the authority of the people and our duly-elected governor without even having the decency to hold public comment. It was very striking to me. And I really think you should do that. I think the question at hand here isn't even about masks. It's just whether the school board will enforce the rules. So legally binding mandate, signed to the effect by the governor of Virginia, requiring an opt-out. That executive order has taken effect. And then the author of Senate Bill 1303 is Senator Donovan, said that the board would not require masks in schools. This is a duly-elected, this is a democratically-elected governor here who's doing this order and you're required to follow it. So you're not just overturning democracy by ignoring him. That's bad enough. You're holding students, parents, and staff hostage. Do you what? I don't know. I mean, you tell me. I don't know why you're doing this, and I'm sure you're nice people. I truly feel bad for the situation you're in, but that does not change the fact that you did what you did and what you did was wrong. And I must say this, it's not to me to do the right thing. You know, I learned in my government class, and as you can see today, voters are very reactive people, but they're also forgiving. If an elected official they trust, you know, does something they disagree with, but then apologizes and does the right thing, you know, voters will move on. But if they don't apologize, hold the course, and continue to do things that voters disagree with, then quite frankly, they won't be forgiven, and voters will take their discontent all the way to the ballot box. Myself concluded, and quite frankly, no political posturing is going to change that. I'd like to thank Ms. Sigmund, thank Ms. Halsted, good luck, Dr. Taylor, and thank you for your time.
That's a tough act to follow. All right, before you start, I'm going to read the next five names. Okay, I'm going to read the next five names, which are the last names on the list. Jamie Decatur, Amy Lynn Smith, Carla Alsop, Casey Durst, and Isabella Adams.
What a bright young man. He's got a Stafford County education just like me, so hopefully I can meet up to the measure there. I'm a father of two young girls, first grader and a kindergarten in the Harbor district. In August, I approached this board and spoke about resilience and how we should be teaching our children, it to our children. And tonight, I'm here to admit a tough lesson in resilience. With mask mandates, I asked my two children to mask every day, because we were told it was temporary. They did exactly what they were told without a single complaint. And recently, with the governor's EO, I asked my daughters how they felt, and out of my own selfishness, I didn't think to do this before, because I just assumed that they would be resilient. It turns out the kids are not resilient. They don't have the skills to communicate the harm that we have done to them. They're young, and they don't know how to communicate effectively. My oldest daughter, a first grader, said her exact words, "I want to breathe fresh air, Daddy." To me, this translated to, "This is not okay, Daddy." I'm here tonight to ask you to do two things, and honestly, I don't care how you accomplish them, whether you ignore a governor, a law, a guidance, whatever you have to do. Number one, you need to let my child breathe. Number two, you need to let healthy children stay home in school, or stay in school. Healthy children should not be out of school, not off for 15, or 5, or 14, or whatever they come up with next. It's some twisted game of cooties and timeout. If you don't do these two things immediately, the last paper talked about constituents and voters, but they're all taxpayers out here. If you don't do these two things immediately, the community is not going to support you anymore. Dr. Taylor talked about revenue. You're going to lose revenue. You're going to lose raises for teachers. People are going to move to other communities. They won't support building more schools or ball fields. There won't be more trailers, less bus drivers, and the whole shebang will be gone if you don't start listening to the people that put you in these seats, that pay the taxes. I need you to make two things happen. Like I said, I don't care how you get there. Do it today. Do it tonight. Tonight on the agenda, you have adopted VDH guidance that came out in December. It's already a month old. We're learning more and more every day about how vaccines don't even keep you from getting infected. There's a whole list of things that go on. You're behind. Today, you can get ahead. You can make a decision. You can unpeel this onion, these layers that have just restricted our children. They're not resilient. We've just ignored them. We thought they were. Two years. Look at the results that he put up on the board. Tonight, you can make an action. Do it. Thank you.
Hi, board members. Dr. Taylor, welcome. Jamie Decatur, Griffiths Widewater. There are 133 school divisions in the state of Virginia. Congratulations on being one of eight that just made national news. On January 16th, Dr. Taylor sent the division an email regarding executive order number two. By the 18th, there was an emergency meeting called, and by the 20th, the school board effectively undermined their own superintendent by voting to maintain a universal mandate. Imagine hurriedly calling a meeting and naming it an emergency because, oh no, the parents might exercise their rights on Monday. What you did this past Thursday was terrible leadership and bad governing, and this is the second time I've stood before you this school year to talk about bad governing. There is a process, and you know it. New information item, public comment, action at the following meeting. You know that. The public deserves ample time to understand action items and opine on them. What you did on Thursday was wrong. It was wrong because you undermined your new superintendent. It was wrong because you disregarded your constituents. It was wrong because you rushed into an emergency closed meeting and then right back out of it to pass a motion in order to circumvent parents exercising their rights come Monday. Finally, I'd like to note that item 10.01 indicated that you were taking a vote tonight to update reduced quarantine timelines based on the updated VDH guidance. That document also includes updated guidance regarding masks. I found it intriguing, for a lack of better words, that you're following updated guidance on quarantine guidelines, but antiquated ones for masks. Just for good measure, the guidelines from the CDC still only recommend masks. The right thing to do would be to resend the motion, bring it back for public information, and before you bring it to action, or you get it. Let's see who has the gumption to finally do what's right, even when it's hard.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Taylor, I've had the pleasure of meeting you. Thank you for that. At one of those Moms for Liberty meetings, too. Yesterday, you all may have seen me on the news, the national news, ABC, NBC, New York, probably some other places. You saw me there because I took my daughter to school yesterday, the young lady who spoke earlier, Maika, and she was turned away. She was turned away by her principal, who's a wonderful man. You guys segregated those students. You made teachers and principals do your dirty work because you were too afraid to do it. Shame on you for doing that, on any of you that didn't vote for this. Shame on you for that. Paul Milde put out a petition a few days ago. No promotion, nothing. It was up to 200-some signatures. Just in the last two hours, we're over 300. This fight is here. I am not going anywhere. I will be here at every meeting. I will be in your face. I will be in my school's face until you fix this. Vote tonight, fix it, because you can, and clearly, because on Thursday you did that. So I don't know why you can't do it tonight. We will not go anywhere. None of us here will. And I will be on the news again, and again, and again, until people stop listening, which doesn't sound like they will. Thank you for your time.
How about that ride in? Good evening. So my name is Casey Durst. My son attends Ferry Farms Elementary School, and I always got to try to start things off with a joke, right? So he gets off to school last week, and he's six, and he's playing with his friends, and he runs up to me, says, "Hey Daddy, what do you call a fish with no eyes?" I said, "I don't know." He goes, "A fish," right? So he's going to be a great dad with jokes like that someday. Hey, so parents, I want to say this, right? You're not alone. We're not alone. Right? We're not alone. It's all of us in here, and the parents throughout this county, we're not alone. You've heard a lot of what people have to say. Some of you disagree, some of you agree. One question, one question I have not been able to determine is what legal statute, what executive order, what policy, law, or anything granted you judicial review to a school board in your hours of closed door a few days ago? I can only assume that that question was
that that question was answered. As we know, there's a system that we rely on. In your decision, you overruled the legislature, the executive, and acted as a judiciary. The reality is, an executive order is in play until a judge with authority, or a court, or legislative body are able to term the validity of an executive order, not a school board. That's not how this works. You know it, I know it, and we all know it, but you did it anyways. Worst of all is that you do it, you're intelligent people, which means you are, which means you know you aren't exactly able to do what you did, which means you did it for political reasons, or because you're a narcissist. You like the power. You love the community knowing who you are. It's not because of the law, and it's because you didn't base the mask decision in August on Senate Bill 1303. You based it on a looming executive order. That may be worse than being a political hack. So the next question is, as we play this game together, and I haven't looked at the upcoming agenda, so maybe this will be brought up. But members here use Senate Bill 1303 for the purposes basing their decision. When the court comes out, hopefully quick, confirming the executive orders in line with Senate Bill 1303, I expect the next day to have my kid go to school without a mask, as your policy would be out of line of executive order number two. So we don't need you to revote. Second, when you do have some vote to resend the latest policy, we see a seven-to-zero vote, you all need to ensure, and you also, you need to ensure that there's anti-discriminatory language, including your policy, to ensure that students aren't called out or segregated by teachers, admins, or staff. This would have been easy to handle in November, when you knew that the new governor, the incoming governor, was going to have the executive order. There's decisions that you could have made and communicated with the community. And I'll guarantee you, if you gave parents choice, because they need to protect students that have issues, that most of the parents in here would have said, "I will put a mask on my kid if there's a known issue is in a classroom for a certain amount of time." If there was trust that was built. But you didn't do that. You absolutely did nothing. I don't expect anything from this board. It's amazing that we rely on the state to listen to our voices more than members of our own community. While parents hope that the executive order is found out to be compliant, and many hope it's within the law, you have hurt this community. You've not built bridges like you're expected to do. We're all done with COVID. We're done with the government's response. And best of luck to you, sir. Very best of luck.
Good evening. My name is Isabella Adams, and I'm a student athlete at North Stafford High School. Today, I have here with me a student athlete for field hockey and a member of the marching band. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the school and the athletic teams to bring light to the matter of turf fields at our school. As you may know, North Stafford High School is the second high school to be built in Stafford County, but one of the last to receive turf fields. Turf fields are a great investment, because unlike grass, turf is recommended, oops, sorry, recommended and made for year-round sports in inclement weather. Many times, our schools had to cancel games, postpone them, or even play at a different high school. This takes away the thrill of playing a high school sport by not being able to play at your own school. One season a few years ago, we didn't have one home game a whole season due to the soccer conditions and inclement weather, and the grass not being fit to play on. This affected the entire season, not only for the players, but for the students who wanted to attend the games, but didn't get the chance. Wanting turf isn't only for girls' soccer, but for boys' soccer, football, lacrosse, and field hockey. Turf fields would affect our school in the best way possible. And on behalf of my school, I ask the board to look into the value of turf fields. With this being said, I'd like you all to think about North Stafford High School, as well as Colonial Forge, and how important turf fields are to everybody. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Lauren. I'm a junior at North Stafford. And-
Excuse me, before you start, can you hold that time? Anyone who speaks now, if you could please sign the sign-in sheet on the podium there? Oh, thank you. When you finish, because we need to keep a record. And I appreciate you lining up. Anyone else that wants to speak, you know, please, you can line up on either side and take turns, or however it best works. So I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I want to get that straight. Thank you.
I'm a junior at North Stafford High School. And originally, I was here to talk about turf fields. But after watching everyone in this room speak on masks, I'd like to share my opinion firsthand as a student, regardless of what anyone else thinks in this room. It's very nerve-wracking to stand up in front of all these people and speak when I have a very different opinion than them. But I feel the need to do it anyways. I think the safest option is masks, especially, sorry. I think the safest option is masks, but with people with medical issues, should be excused from them without any question. Without questions like, "Where's your mask? Why aren't you wearing your mask?" I think, from what Dr. Taylor said, the rate of teachers leaving this system has increased throughout the years. I've heard many teachers say, if masks are uplifted, they no longer will feel safe to teach. While keeping students safe is a priority, I also think keeping the teachers and staff is safe, the teachers and staff safe is important, too. While parents' opinions are valid, very much so, I would like to see a lot more students show their opinion firsthand. And at the end of the day, we all have opinions, and they all have negative and positives. I think masks should stay in place for the safety of not only the students, but the staff as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allen Law. I live in Aquila Harbor. I have raised three boys through the Stafford County school system. My youngest is now in 12th grade, so I'm almost done. Now, as the young man said earlier, I assume you guys are all nice people, and I think you probably think you're doing the right thing. What I'd like to do is not talk laws, I'd like to apply common sense. If you're scared of COVID, and so you feel, we're scared, we've got to protect everybody, if you believe it's so bad, and if you believe the vaccine works, get vaccinated and leave the rest of us alone. It's as simple as that. Secondly, Barack Obama said a while back, elections have consequences. After Loudoun County flagrantly ignored parents' desires, they woke up a sleeping giant. I've never been to a Stafford County school board meeting, ever, but you woke me up. Loudoun County woke up a sleeping giant of Virginia, and we have a new governor because of that. Now, as Barack Obama said, elections have consequences. If you want to keep your job, I suggest you remember that you work for us. Because you have a link to a sleeping giant. And if you don't start listening to us, you probably won't be keeping this job very long. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. I don't know if I'm overwhelmed from the emotion of just protection of my children, or just the wisdom and articulation that I've heard this evening from so many people. I'd like to recognize Dr. Taylor. Thank you. And Ms. Maureen Sigmund. Yes, ma'am. You were so prompt in getting back to me when all of this was going through on Friday.
My name is Amy Smith, and I have been a Stafford County resident for over 20 years. I have a son that is a junior in high school, and two daughters in grades fifth and first. First, I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak and express the gratitude for my representative. And getting to the point, we could argue semantics, theories, conspiracy theories, science, junk science, databases of information and misinformation. And Lord knows, it is all being thrown at us in an overwhelmingly unstable states of chaos and confusion. I could start with factual CDC report numbers, but I've never been good at anything like that with it either. But I can't do math without a calculator. And from what I see, children from the ages up to and including 18 only account for 1/10,000 of the severe effects of the COVID. And to shame someone, or accuse them of being selfish or uncaring because they disagree is gaslighting. Sounds like, it sounds like a narcissistic and manipulative relationship to me. But you all are elected servants. I had a 15-year career in environmental science, and am now working in holistic and alternative healing. Based on my research, the risk-to-benefits ratio has been represented in gross disproportion when it comes to the masks. We have yet to understand the communication, social, and developmental disruptions that our children will have to overcome. Ask any POW or mental health professional, and they will tell you that isolation is the worst form of torture. Isolation is becoming our children's normalization. And being agreeable just to keep the peace is a trauma response. Please stop treating mental health as a secondary health crisis. I teach my kids to respect and not fear. Stop making our kids hide their identity. It is my American right to freely make choices concerning my children and their well-being. Please stop trying to convince us that our rights are up for debate. They are not. This choice is not just my choice, it is all of our choice. And it's not just one way or another, but the American way. The American way is freedom of choice. More so, it is my God-given right and obligation to steward my children as I see led to do. I am declaring that our kids stop being used as political pawns. God bless America and you. Thank you.
Did she sign in?
Excuse me, could the last speaker please sign in?
Amy?
Ms. Osborne, can you give that sheet to people so they can sign in after they speak, please?
She was already on the-
Oh, she's, she was on those? Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Your turn.
Okay. Hi, I'm Bison Marshall. I live in Embry Mill in the Garrisonville District, and I am in sixth grade at HH Pool Middle School. I was very excited when my parents had gotten an email saying that I did not have to wear a mask starting January 24th. And they had gotten an email before that Monday, changing your mind, saying, "I have to wear it." And I was very sad that I would not be able to see my friends' faces after two years. We also do not have to wear a mask when running, or when I was doing field hockey, or while I'm eating. So, my question is, when will I be able to not wear a mask in school? Thank you.
I had no intention, actually, of speaking. And this is my first school board meeting. I honestly don't know any of your names, I'm sorry. So all that, like, stuff that they're saying, welcome and all this stuff, I don't have it, I don't have, like, I don't have, like, numbers and codes to say laws or anything like that. I'm speaking to you as a teacher, not from this district, from a neighboring one. I've noticed there haven't been very many teachers at all coming up here. I think it's maybe because they have fear for their jobs. I know that's why I'm not speaking at my district's school board. Also, I know they're not going to listen to anything I have to say. I'm here unmasked, gladly, I want to be. But in school all day long, and I teach 10 classes and 260 kids a week, I wear my mask. I have breakouts all over my face, I'm covered with foundation. It's part of the job, I get it. But I can tell you, as a teacher, the kids, they, they're struggling. They're struggling with masks. If you have kids that have issues, and you want to wear a mask, and you feel unsafe, I am totally cool with your kid wearing 10 masks if they want to. However many masks you want to wear. But for those of us parents that don't want to mask our kids, and for those of us educators, who, by the way, I do a much better job when I don't have to muffle whatever I'm saying with a mask. I have kids in the back. My classrooms are overpacked with kids. Kids in the back, they can't understand what I'm saying, so I'm constantly pulling my mask down. So what good is that doing? The kids can't hear what I'm saying, and I'm constantly saying, "Pull your mask up, pull your mask up." They're not learning anything that I'm teaching. So it's not really helping. We're breathing on each other, there's 30 kids in a classroom. I teach family and consumer sciences, by the way. So we're cooking, they're all over each other, they're tasting food. Are we supposed to take all of that away from them and not do anything? So I'm just asking you, because I feel strongly about Stafford. My kids are in Stafford schools, because this is where I want them to be. So I'm asking you guys to do what I know this county, this district is able to do that my district isn't going to do, and do what's right, and let the parents choose what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carmen LeMayr. I am in the Rock Hill District. Integrity, dignity, community. As a parent, a teacher, a doctor, public officials, the community in general, it is our responsibility and obligation to protect our children. Assist them to learn and grow, think for themselves, make good decisions, and encourage them to accomplish great things. Children are extremely social. They crave interactions with other children. It is essential for their growth and development. Masks are contributing to the physical and mental decline of our innocent youth. We rely on facial expressions and mouth movements to read and write, to learn phonics. Masks are prohibiting our children from learning that. With the decline in the education curriculum, and the increase in the woke indoctrination of our children, this is catastrophic, as we already have kids in high school on a fifth-grade reading level, I know four. Four. By forcing your fears and anxieties on our children, we are seeing severe increase in anxiety, depression, and suicides in our youth. A smile and a kind word has been proven to change a person's decision to take their own life. Love and laughter are the greatest healers. Yet we continue to cover their beautiful smiles, shame them into obedience, just to put the vaccinated adults at ease. When did we, as a community, decide to sacrifice our children to protect adults? How dare we? Every single one of us should hang our heads in shame and beg forgiveness that we let it happen one day. One. I tried to comply and compromise your mandates and my morals. I bought my son face shields so that he could breathe and be seen. He came home in a mask and told me he was not allowed to wear them. That is unacceptable. Where there is risk, there must be choice. Doctor's studies show prolonged use of masks can lead to lung disease, mostly associated with mold. Hospitals change the masks after each patient or every 20 minutes to prevent bacterial growth. A diaper is left on a child too long causes diaper rash and yeast infections. Yet we are choosing to put them on our children's face, knowing that the mouth is the most filthy part of our body. This is not health or safety. By defying the governor's executive order, you are setting the example that, like you, we, the people, can defy any executive order with no consequence. Until the court makes a decision, you are in violation of that law. The compliant, I'm sorry, the complaint regarding the order is that it breaks state law. State law states that it follows CDC guidelines, and CDC guidelines state that masks are recommended. I can recommend that you use mashed potatoes for your earplugs. That does not mean it is the best suggestion. Nor are you required to follow it. Mandates are a violation of our constitutional, humanitarian, and civil rights. But more important, it violates our natural right to breathe. Natural law advises a person cannot be prosecuted for actions taken to defend their natural right. It surpasses all laws. And for JFK, freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We do not pass it on in the bloodstream. The only way that we can inherit the freedoms that we have known is if we fight for it, protect it, and hand it to them with the knowledge they must do the same. If we don't, we may very well spend our sunset years telling our children, and our children's children, what it was like when men and women were free.
If you would like to submit your comments to the record, be welcome. Okay, I've been asked by a board member to have a break, so I'll say at 10 o'clock, we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll continue with the public comments. So we've got about 15 more minutes before we take a break. Thank you. Or do you need to- At 10 o'clock. We're going to break at 10 o'clock.
Oh, 10 o'clock.
Okay, we got, does Dr. Warner know? She had to break now? Okay. All right, I'm sorry, come on. Yeah, we're going to, at 10 o'clock, we're going to take the break.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Danielle Farley, and I live in the Rock Hill District. I am here because I am a homeschooling mom. I homeschool all four of my kids. And what I continue to hear is the theme is parental choice. They are wanting parental choice. I have the ability, if I want to do public school, if it comes to my family and we need to, I can do that. If I want to do private school, I can do that, or homeschool. It is my choice, my husband's choice, and based off of our religious convictions. These parents are asking for you guys to allow them to have choice. And I think it's important, even for homeschooling families, because my concern is that at what point will you override my parental choice as a homeschooler? I don't think that is fair. And at what point, if the CDC came out and said, And at what point, if the CDC came out and said, "It's okay for kids to view pornographic material," would you ignore the parents when they're saying, "I don't want that in my child's school"? There's so many other issues. This one choice sets the stage for how you guys will direct any other concerns that parents have about what's going on in their school, or what's going on with COVID mitigations, however you all want to frame it. But it's time to let them choose. Thank you.
I'll fill that out after. All right, very good. Well, thank you very much for your time, Chairwoman, School Board, Dr. Taylor. All right, so my name's Thomas Holliday, and yes, I spell it like Doc Holliday from the Old West. But I am not your Huckleberry. The reason I'm here is because I'm a dad, I'm a concerned citizen, I'm a taxpayer in this county. I'm originally from the great state of Ohio, I've been here for nine years. Brought here by government work, I've supported the war on terror twice for all of our freedoms, okay? I'm an Eagle Scout, my dad's an Eagle Scout, and my oldest son, who's a Stafford High School senior, just got his Eagle Scout, all right, so very important. I was very excited when Governor Youngkin signed the executive order saying that masks were no longer required. Told my children, I said, "Hey, you get to go to school without a mask on, and this is great." And they were excited, too. Only to find out that there are some elected bureaucrats that decided that their choices were more important than mine. I'm the dad, you're not the mom and dad of my kids, right? I didn't give up that right, nor will I. It's not going to happen. So let's take us a moment to think about this pandemic. We got a pandemic, we got a virus on the loose. People were told to mask up, 15 days to shorten the curve, et cetera, et cetera. And then all of a sudden, people start suffering from bacterial pneumonia. And there's an issue with that, right? I mean, this is a severe health crisis now. People wear masks and they have bacterial pneumonia. But the elites don't care, they have their food, they have their comfy ice cream and clothes, or whatever. And it's the common folks that suffer, and that tends to happen. I know, because I also ran for the House Representatives in the state of Ohio in 2006. So I know what politics is, I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly, okay? But what I just described to you was not our current COVID pandemic. What I just described was the pandemic from the Spanish influenza of 1918, 1919. 100 years ago. They wore masks, too. And they suffered from bacterial pneumonia that killed scores and scores of people. So each one of you that's wearing a mask, I pray for you. Why? Because I don't want you to get bacterial pneumonia, I don't want you to die. In the 15 seconds I have left here on my clock, is that what I really feel is that there's a spirit of fear. The only entity in the universe I know that is focused on fear is the devil. Praise God, focus on good.
Good evening, my name is Jesse Belt, I have four girls here in Stafford County. And I have to ask if y'all are starting to feel like you're on the wrong side of history, because except for two of you, y'all are. And I think that's starting to become apparent. Out of all the people that was here today, there was one woman who gave a plea that sounded like she was kind of wore masks, it was a very emotional plea, I have respect for that. And one Democrat Party dog that had a sign right there. I don't know if y'all noticed, but he packed up his sign, tucked his tail, and crawled away. And there's a reason for that. Y'all are supposed to represent us, and you're not. Now, I had a whole bunch of things about facts and all the sort of data to back it up. Let's get down to it, these masks are just decoration, we know it is. The CDC said that we are supposed to wear an N95 mask because these pieces of cloth are too small for the Omicron variant. Why are we making our kids do it? Not only that, but our kids are the most resilient to this disease. We know that out of the people who died, the majority of them had four more comorbidities. The CDC didn't even test to find out how many comorbidities actually had, or how many children actually had comorbidities when they died. There weren't that many, there's only 592 that died over the last two years. And I say only, not to be callous, but out of the thousands of people who have died, it by and large were not children, and it probably weren't healthy children. So why are you making this policy? I'm going to assume that you guys are able to look up CNN and Google Fact just as much as I did. So I'm not wholly sure why you made decisions not based off of real facts. I'm going to guess that it was political. And so let's get down to brass tacks, politics. There's a reason why a red wave happened, and why it is happening. There's a reason why Governor Youngkin was able to win his election. It was this issue. It was parent choice. Let's be honest, Paul McCullough was probably going to win until he came for our kids. And now you're coming for my kids. One of the biggest things that we are seeing, you guys are begging for money. But I'm seeing school grades drop, and I'm seeing depression, anxiety, self-harm in children rise. You are hurting my children. Every time some kid filled with anxiety and depression takes a razor blade to his or her arm, you're helping make that happen. I will not vote or support you if you do not change your minds with this, and change it quick. I will find another representative who will represent me. And I don't know if you saw, all the people that showed up, they're not voting for you either. This is your chance to fix it before we fix it. Y'all have a good night.
How you doing? I'm Paul Zavada, I have two daughters in Rock Hill District. I work for federal law enforcement. And one of the first things when I have a case is I make sure that I never ask the lawyers their opinions. That's the first thing. Second thing is, I moved back from Japan in 2017, and since then, I've never had one correspondence with my school board, ever. Not one email, nothing. So, not a lot of opinions have been asked of us. I'm busy, I haven't had dinner tonight. I came here, I just couldn't stand on the wall anymore, so I'm just kind of winging it right now. I'm here for my daughters. You know, I sent you all an email, I got one response, "Thank you, Mrs. Halsted." The rest of you, pretty disrespectful, didn't even respond. Just want to let you know that you're my person. And if this doesn't get fixed, I promise you, I will be spending all of my time making sure you're not the next time you come up for election.
Hi, my name is Rachel Johnson, I'm in the Rock Hill District. I don't have anything terribly articulate, and really not much different than what's been said here. But I was a proud Stafford parent. I was in my kids' schools every day, I was baking pies, I was raising money, I was doing all the things. And two years ago, I was told that my IEP child, who has special needs, was meeting minimum standards. That's their only goal. And that's where this all started. Then COVID happened, they couldn't meet his needs again. So I homeschooled all three of my kids last year. This year, my youngest wanted to go back, and God, I love her teacher and I love her principal, so I sent her back. This year, on and on, over and over, she has a viral rash that breaks out on her chin. Her pediatrician said it needs to stay dry to heal. Kept brushing it off, brushing it off, finally filed for an exemption where I was told absolutely she can sit in another classroom. So I tell her, and she's like, "Mom, I'm so happy to have my friends again, I don't want to be in another classroom." Cool, so this virus, her doctor said, can spread to her eyes and make her blind. No one cares, my kid doesn't matter. This is ridiculous, masks don't work, the CDC, who you guys are listening to, has said cloth masks don't work. Children aren't getting severely sick. Germany, the UK, they have not universally masked elementary school kids in either of those countries. Their numbers aren't any worse than ours. We were told two weeks, then we were told until vaccines were available for everyone, school age and up. The can just keeps getting kicked down the curb. I have a husband who's severely immune compromised and has been hospitalized with the flu. I get it, sucks. My expectation is never on anyone else to keep him safe. It's for him to do what he can do, keep himself as safe as possible. For him, he got vaccinated, his choice. My choice is for my kids to go to school and be part of the school that I pay tax dollars for. I made abundantly clear, your tax numbers dropped in 2020 because people like me pulled their kids. Let us send them back.
Okay, this will be the last speaker before the break, and then we'll reconvene. Thank you.
Perfect, I'm the husband. One of the reasonable accommodations for my daughter, by the way, is a face shield, which I politely told the principal, who I have the utmost respect for, who's doing your dirty work, that's not approved by the CDC, nor is sitting my kid in a corner six feet away from anyone. So that's kind of the game we're playing. But anyway, I didn't plan to speak today, so I apologize for the rambling, but I've been here three hours, so damn it, I'm going to get my three minutes. So I just took notes on stuff that I've heard today. So to the couple of folks that disagree with the vast majority in the room, I applaud you for getting up and speaking, and I further applaud the audience for being respectful. I think that's awesome. Second is the PPE for teachers. My daughter's geometry teacher is elderly, she's a retired annuitant that you've hired back because you couldn't get good teachers. She's high-risk, like, genuinely, if anyone's going to have a fear of COVID, it's her. She's wearing like three masks, how are you, as a county, not providing her with proper PPE? How are you not giving her an N95 mask? That was in my email that congratulated you on releasing all this, was buying proper EPP for the teachers and staff that want it. I don't think that even hit your inbox before you guys changed your mind. So that, that needs to be addressed. Even if you keep this as it is and you don't change anything, buy damn PPE for your teachers and staff so they're using proper CDC-approved stuff. Went to a North Stafford basketball game two weeks ago, my daughter's into basketball now, nobody wears a damn mask. The kids, it's around their chin, their nose, nobody corrects them. And so again, I hope that you just go into a school and see that. Because you might feel good about what you're doing, but it's not actually happening. Teacher turnover, I know, sir, you were here talking about budget, understand. But if Stafford was a great place to work, people would get paid less to stay here. And so I think you need, and you're new, so I hope you work on that culture. I hope you send our administrators and vice principals to leadership training. I think a lot of those folks were great teachers who got promoted and aren't great leaders. And I know at our elementary school, like, that was a problem. Like, there was disagreements with principals and they were leaving. Down to a minute left, so let's go, let's see, yep, talked about the reason why. Oh, as a North Stafford alumni, for, I'm old now, so like 20-some years ago, give them a damn turf field. To those poor ladies that picked the wrong meeting to come to. Like, come on. And that goes to the parity and all that crap, you know? My daughter's going into high school, so I got hit with this wave of like, there's all these programs I got to apply to, like, my daughter's got to pick her career now in eighth grade, you know? This is stupid. But I'm like learning, like, my kid can't do Part IB because they're at North Stafford, and they can't do this because they're at this school, I'm like, that's a bunch of bull. You know, so if we're going to build a new school, we're going to make sure, that's one of those things. And poor North Stafford, I went to that basketball game, it looks the same damn way as when I went there 20-some years ago. That is an armpit of a school that needs addressing. Appreciate you.
All right, well, we convene at 10:10 for the next speakers.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Ezra Jackson, and I'm a junior at Colonial Forge High School. Last week, I was here in attendance as the school board met behind closed doors for two hours and came out making a decision that no lawyer should have approved. They made a law, they, your lawyer decided that the school board would supersede the governor's mandate. A mandate that the governor, who was elected by the people in November, chose. Executive Order 2, Section 4 reads, "A child whose parent has elected that he or she is not subject to a mask mandate should not be required to wear a mask under any policy implemented by a teacher, school, school district, the Department of Education, or any state authority." I think that speaks for itself. EO 2 does not override SB 1303, rather it works with it. Parents are able to make a choice, and their choice of sending me to public school is not signing away parental rights. SB 1303 was in effect in August, when you voted to put a 30-day mask mandate and before former Governor Northam put a mandate into effect. Why at that point did you not consider SB 1303? It was in effect, and you guys decided to put in your own mandate. If 1303 was in, if 1303 is the legislative piece that you say it is, why did you not consider it to be the piece that it was when it was written, when it was passed, when you guys voted? As an aside, by the way, I was out there and I used the water fountain. You guys have working water fountains here, the schools don't. Do you think all these people would be here, and the people who were here before that left, do you think that they would be here if they did not care? Did you think, do you think Virginians voted in a new governor? A governor who is honestly across partisan lines from where Virginia stands? Do you think that they'd vote him in if they didn't stand for these issues, the issues that he passed on day one? The people spoke in November. Please listen to the people you claim to stand for. Tonight, all we need is a motion and a vote, and a second. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Jackson, could you please sign in?
I did.
Oh, you got, did you get everybody? Okay, great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Christian Zwillenough, I'm from Thonmouth District. Dr. Taylor, welcome aboard, and sorry that this is where you guys start things off, but you know what you signed up for, and we appreciate you coming on board. I am here on behalf of my daughters, who are not able to be here because it's past bedtime, and they asked me to just be their voice. They are in second and fourth grade at Conway Elementary. We had a conversation with them, we walked through every part of the executive order. We walked through every line of SB 1303 to have an honest conversation with them, because they're smart kids. They understood what was being asked of this board and where this board took a decision that was not in their right. My daughters were in tears, not because they had to wear masks, because they didn't want to defy their parents, they didn't want to defy their teachers, and you put them in that position. You used them as pawns. Our principal and the parents are now in this to fight it out because you made a decision without any care or any voice from the parents. On what behalf do you have the right? You have no legal authority. Executive Order stated that there's option to opt out. Your motion was to remove the opt-out option. Executive Order Directive 4 says you don't have that right. You do not remove the right of the parent. So I ask you to follow suit with every parent that stood here before you. Make your motion, second, remove your decision. The superintendent spoke in his email on the 16th that said, "We will follow that executive order." You all made the decision to speak in defiance of what the superintendent stated. He, if you had started with, "There's some confusion, we're going to work this out," then we would have been okay with that. But that was not the position. You went, you found your loophole, you talked to a lawyer who could wiggle it around for you. That's not how this works. There's legal precedent, follow it, it's the rule of law. Our children want to follow the rule of law, that's what we have taught them, and we will continue to teach them. And they, I'll make sure that I get their words in. You should have the right to decide what your kids should do and be able to follow the executive order if you want to. I end with that. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Mojica, I reside in the Garrisonville District. I'm also a member of Moms for Liberty. Some of you voted to continue with the mask mandate. I want you to know how your decision has affected my 11-year-old daughter in a negative way. She told me right before the school board had made their decision last week to continue requiring masks, that she was going to wear her mask regardless of the outcome. It was an odd affair of catching COVID, as she had the Delta variant back in October. And being unvaccinated, her symptoms were mild and recovered with no complications. Her reason to continue wearing her mask is because she feels insecure... Her reason to continue wearing her mask is because she feels insecure and wants to cover up her beautiful smile. She hides behind her fabric mask and sees it as a comfort blanket for almost two years now. I have heard from other parents with similar stories. You have helped to set kids to believe that they can hide behind a fabric mask to cover up whatever little self-esteem they may have. I have lost a lot of trust and faith within the school board. You say that you want to keep our kids safe, but your actions don't line up with keeping our kids safe. In contrast, you are stripping away parental rights and deprive our children of a proper education. Coming from a parent and taxpayer, it is a disappointment to see how much control our elected officials have, especially when it's not in the best interest for our children. This quote was already shared, but I'm gonna go ahead and share it again. It's by Ronald Reagan. "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same, or one day, we will spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it was once like in the United States where men were free." I hope this sinks in for some of you who are supporting mask mandates. If you claim to care about the mental state and well-being of our children, then show your support by your actions and not your words. Thank you.
Good evening, school board. Dr. Taylor. My name is Lucinda Grikowski. We're part of the Garrisonville District. And I'm coming to bring some attention to the way this matter was handled, right? Plenty of the people that spoke before me covered the data, covered the law, things like that, that you guys, you know, make this decision on. I want to address how this matter was handled. Because it was a complete disregard of the parents that are in the school district, our children, and your administrators that are at your schools. So come Sunday night, we get the letter, and it goes out mass notification. I had a couple friends over. There's kids go to Stafford County as well. Our phones ring, and we get the mass notification that there's a notification from the superintendent going out about the new EO that went out by the governor. Great, we read it. I disclosed to my children that this is gonna, this is gonna be compliance for them. They get to go to school on the next, the following Monday after all of our snow days. And they don't have to wear a mask anymore because this is something that they've been doing for the last two years, and it's not normal to them. They were thrilled, excited. We had our couple snow days. All of a sudden, you guys decided to host a meeting, an emergency meeting, which was never disclosed in the first initial, so it was hastily put out. So if you guys were even in the opinion that this was gonna be a topic of discussion, that should have went out on Sunday night, when the rest of the information that went out there. So it wasn't. You guys did it behind closed doors, great. No mass notification came out on Friday. Couple emails here and there. I never received an email from our school period, so if I wasn't up on social media, I would have sent my children to school, let them walk to school like I do every other day. They would have showed up with no mask and then been forced to wear a mask at school. Thankfully, I follow social media. Walked my kids to school on Monday. In fact, turned away because they said that they didn't want to wear a mask, and I had already made the decision that I wasn't gonna force the mask on my children if they were not comfortable doing it. So we walked away. Couple of their parents followed suit, had a great conversation. Don't get me wrong, our teachers have been great, and our principal has been great and accommodating. But at the end of the day, you guys are violating the SB 1303 law that you're hiding behind by denying my children in school learning because they refuse to wear a mask. You're violating the law right now, okay? So get that, understand that. Second, everyone's talking about votes and how they're gonna reply and vote and all that kind of stuff. Under the Virginia Code 22.1-87, we have 30 days to file a lawsuit against you guys, and I plan on doing it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristi Henson. My daughter attends Rodney Thompson. I have never, ever been to a school board meeting, and I've never, obviously, stood up here and spoke. I am so angry, I can't even begin to tell you how angry I am. Got your letter? Everything was great, my kids were excited, we followed the law. We followed the rules, right? That's what you're supposed to do. I taught my kids that that's what you do, we listened, we did what we were supposed to do. So then the new governor changes it. So now, everybody's excited, now we get a new law to follow. My kids are beside themselves. I have a nine-year-old and a 12-year-old, they hate the mask. It's been two years, they hate the mask. Kids don't get it the way adults do, they don't transfer it the way adults do. We know masks don't work, they've had the science, right? My kids, who've been masked for two years, have had COVID twice. Both of them, twice! And they're okay, because they're kids. And for the most part, the kids around here are resilient, right? The adults want to be vaccinated, get vaccinated, then you have no fear. I wasn't even vaccinated and I didn't get it. I did get vaccinated, and then I got it, right? So let's just say, enough, enough. We did it, we followed the rules. So let's continue to follow the rules, right? Should be that easy. Now, my daughter was told that when she showed up on Monday without a mask, that she was gonna be removed and sat in the hallway until we'd come and pick her up. So you're taking my kid's education. And how is that counted? Is my kid gonna be in trouble for missing school? Because we had a law that said they didn't have to wear a mask anymore, so they don't want to, so now they're not getting an education, right? If I don't send my kid to school, I get in trouble. If you guys don't teach them, if the teachers don't teach them, what happens? Does my kid fail? Because the governor passed a law that you don't think is okay? There are teachers, I have a friend whose husband is a teacher with a medical problem. He has a heart problem. And he has to wear that mask, and it's hard for him to breathe. And they've told him to pull it down sometimes. He's a teacher with a heart problem, right? So if everybody wants to be vaccinated and masked, great. But if you don't want to be masked, for the kids, they should not be masked. For the adults who have medical problems, I personally don't think that any, I think that you should always have a choice, adult or kid. But if you have a medical problem and you're trying to teach these kids, how is that helpful for anybody? You're killing the morale of the students. You're killing the morale of our kids. And you're ruining their education. We had an ability to make it right. And you guys voted behind closed doors with an attorney that we didn't even know to go against it.
Hi, I'm Katie Brown, I'm a sophomore at Stafford High School. I love going to school, I love my friends, my teachers, and being back in school. I was so happy when I was told last week we wouldn't have to wear a mask anymore. Then you secretly voted and changed that. It was no longer up to my parents to decide anymore. You decided for me and every other child in Stafford County. You choose that my little sister, who's in middle school in Stafford, and for my little brother, who is in kindergarten in Stafford County. My anxiety has been by through the roof, been through the roof because of all this. I am now on anxiety medicine, and my anxiety attacks come on even worse when I'm wearing a mask for over six hours a day while at school. I ask you to please re-vote and remove these masks. We can't breathe, it's like these masks are in place. Want us to sit down and be quiet? Don't stand up for what you believe in. I've always stood up for what I believe in, and will continue to do. So again, I ask you to please, please let us remove these masks. Let us breathe and let me see my friends' faces, my teachers' faces, my staff's faces at my school for the first time in two years.
Hi, my name's David Andresco. Didn't really know what to talk about tonight, so I just kind of took notes on the way out there. I was actually expecting a lot more people wearing a mask today to come in, you know, congratulate stunning and brave voters who voted to uphold the law and all that great stuff. But, you know, only the first speaker, wish they'd hold on a little bit longer, just a little bit longer, students. I think I've seen this movie before, the last two years, two more weeks, to slow the spread. To slow the spread. It's airborne virus. Everyone's gonna get it. Everyone. Even God Fauci has said everyone's gonna get it. It is what it is. So I did some digging, and Stafford did get, I think, 4.9 million for COVID relief funds. Looked at how they were spent, there's like four subsections with no details, so, eh, I don't know. When I filed for a exemption for my kids in the fall, I was able to get a face shield or mask breaks. Neither of which are approved by the CDC, but whatever, we're allowed to follow those, I guess. I guess that's the same thing that's going on right now. Same lawyer in the fall said it was fine. This is just kind of regurgitating what everyone else said. But so, apparently, it's political at this point, you know? People say it shouldn't, but we got people on the board who have activists on their Twitter, you know, keynote speakers at victim complex organizations. We got other ones who post edgy memes that are very offensive and hurtful to, I don't know, somebody. You know? It's frustrating. The last time I spoke with the Stafford nurse, I said, "So on your quarantine programs, you know, like how many of those contact tracing people have come down with COVID who have had a close contact?" She said, "You know, that's a good question." I said, "That is a good damn question, maybe you should know that, you know? That's your job as the nurse." I don't know if we've got that number, it's probably very few, to be honest with you. Let's see here. People say, even to compromised kids, I want to say that there are already policies in place if, say, a kid has cancer, they do have the ability to be, I guess, in a safe area. Who had the talk with their kids before they came here? Anyone have the talk? Well, my talk said, "I'm going to this school board. I may catch COVID and die." So, did anyone else have that, or was that just me? No? All right. Stop it, guys.
My name is Joshua Bacico, and I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after seeing some of the slides early on today by our superintendent, I couldn't resist. I'm not gonna speak much about masks, as I'm sure based off my emails for the past two years, you know my stance. I know a couple of you on this board are new to this year, so my comments are not directed at you. My comments are directed at the rest of you. You might have a title in front of your name, but that doesn't make you smart. That doesn't make you have common sense. When COVID hit, myself along with many parents stood up here and discussed that our children need in-person learning, and virtual doesn't get the job done. We were told that it will have a detrimental effect on our children and that our kids will not learn as they should. Well, you didn't listen to the majority of us and made your decisions based on politics. You decided to go against the overwhelming majority and look at what this has cost us. The pass rates of SOLs with our students dropped 35%. I hope this makes you feel horrible, as it should. I hope this makes you feel like you failed, which you have. You have failed our kids and let down the parents who entrusted you to make the best decisions for our children. Please make the right decision now and give us parents a right to choice, a choice to send our kids with or without masks.
Let's go, or just start talking? I am Mark Bowie, I am part of the Hartwood District. My kids go to Falmouth. So first, I thought I was Falmouth District, found out I was Hartwood, thank God. All right. So this is my first time attending a school board. My kids, they've been going to school here for a few years, they got stationed here. I'm retired, so we're gonna stay here. So I got another one that's gonna be getting in school. So obviously, I have, I'm invested into this process. And this last vote y'all did Thursday kind of just brought me out, and I'm like, all right, I gotta get more involved, I gotta come save my piece, or at least support. So I had a speech prepared. I didn't make the sign-up, and then after hearing everybody else, like, I couldn't hold water to what some of these people were saying. So we're gonna scratch that, and I just made some notes of some things that I'm gonna talk about here real quick. So one of the things, leaders versus followers. Dr. Taylor, thank you for being a leader. Thank you for sending that initial email out, that obviously, you had to retract that, but it takes a lot to be a leader, and you showed that by doing that, because that was the right decision. I apologize that you had to retract that email. But again, thank you. You may make some decision later on that's gonna piss all of us off, but that was a good one, and I appreciate it. Alyssa, thank you for being there for the parents on Monday, standing with them. Maureen, thank you for voting against this mandate last Thursday. And if anybody follows Stafford County social media, then everybody was well aware that the folks that opposed y'all's vote was gonna be here tonight speaking about it. Clearly, not many of them showed up to support y'all, of those that made that decision to uphold the mask policy. There's a few that did, there was even, I believe, a young lady that, you know, goes to school. And I applaud them for their differences, or their difference of opinion. But I just, there's a lot of support here, so that should tell you something. There's a couple of you that I'm not sure you're gonna try for reelection. The two that I'm talking about are ones that we thought would agree with Alyssa and Maureen. I'm not sure why you didn't, but I don't think you're planning on going for reelection because you know if you are, that's not gonna look good. Last thing is, I'm gonna talk about a story real quick, I got 27 seconds. So my kid got notified, we got notified an hour before school was out on a Friday. This happened a little while ago, but I feel this story is relevant to the silliness of all this. An hour before school was out on a Friday, we got told we had to come pick up our 10-year-old because of being in close contact, or whatever the case was. Like, okay, there's an hour left, like, well, what about our other kid that's with him all the time, rides a bus? I'm sorry. And long story short, he was able to go back to school on Monday because of the timeline piece. So we literally picked him up an hour before school was over on a Friday, but he was able to come back Monday. Just ridiculous. Thank you all, I hope y'all re-vote. Thank you again.
Is there, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? If there is anyone else, please line up so we can move on, because we have other work when we finish these. Come on down. You can sign in when you finish.
Okay, thanks. Hi, my name is Jennifer Hansen, I'm the mother of four children in Stafford County. And I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I usually have very severe anxiety, and so it's just hard to even come down here. But I heard a lot of things spoken tonight, I'm not gonna repeat it all. We all know kind of the topics that have been brought up. But there is one thing that I did not hear, and so I just thought I'd go ahead and speak on that. Sorry if I didn't address you respectfully and appropriately. Thank you all for being here, and thanks for listening to my concerns and everybody here. I don't think that people are using common sense concerning the issue. We're bringing the kids to school masked, they are shoulder to shoulder in a lunchroom without a mask the entire time. And when we're social distancing, they say 15 minutes, more than 15 minutes, would be a positive contact. They're there for 20 minutes having lunch. So I don't know what you think would change by removing the masks. COVID doesn't take a lunch break just because the kids do. And so, they've already been exposed. There's no difference in their exposure, according to social distancing, of, like I said, if they are in close contact for more than 15 minutes than if the masks were removed all day. That's all I had to say. It's just the one thing I haven't heard yet. And thank you very much.
One more.
All right, if there's anyone after the next speaker, please line up. If we don't have anybody lined up, we're gonna close the public comment period. So if we see you standing on the side, we'll know you want to speak.
Good evening to the board, Dr. Taylor. Thank you so much for coming tonight, and I had no idea. I had heard before about Stafford County teachers, and I've heard complaints before about pay, but that curve is pretty ridiculous. So I'm kind of ignorant to that, and I'm glad that you showed us tonight. I, I didn't have anything prepared, so forgive me. Uh, I would go into my children, and not liking to be masked, but everybody has said that. Very eloquently, um, they've been respectful, and, um, I appreciate them very much for being here tonight and staying here. And I've been here long, and I don't even know if you have a vending machine, but I'm pretty hungry, so after this, I'm gonna look for one. Uh, I wanna talk about the teachers, because I, I don't, I think that's been left out a lot. Um, you talked about it. You talked about supporting the teachers. I think if there are teachers still watching me, um, they know that I have supported them from day one. I have volunteered in the classroom. I have brought a brilliant chocolate fountain for my children's, uh, birthdays before. It's been amazing. Um, I have not been allowed to go back in and volunteer. I have to stand at the door to get my child when I go take them out. Um, so I'd like to get back to that. I would like to unmask our kids. I would like to get rid, rid of the ridiculous testing that is completely inaccurate. Um, I would like to, uh, release the pressure off these teachers that are policing children on a daily basis. And I think it's ridiculous. And, um, school nurses taking away from things that need to be done with these children. Some of these children are diabetic. Some of them need daily meds, and they have to run to rooms to give them their meds. And by them sitting and counting each child that's been, and doing their contact tracing, that's taking away from that. So, all in all, yes, we want our kids to be unmasked. We want them to go back to school and smile at other kids. We want them to interact the way they should, but we also wanna support our teachers. We wanna collaborate with them again. I, I love doing that. I've had some of the best parent-teacher conferences where I've cried and hugged teachers, and I wanna get back to that. I wanna do the best thing for our children. I think you should vote tonight. Vote on whatever you need to do, but I'm waiting here until you do.
I see no one else standing to come forward, so we will close the citizen comment period and come to the board for standing committee reports. Are there any standing committee reports?
Madam Chair, I have a point of information. What would it actually take to move to a vote on executive order two tonight?
We can't conduct business while there is other distractions, so thank you for your respect of this board as we move forward with our business. Um, Ms. Sigmund, that's a question that we can send to our parliamentarian. It's, um, it's built right here. I, I ask that we, that we get that information from her after we go through, uh, some items we're not on the action portion?
Thank you. I apologize for my, I'm day 25. I don't know it all yet.
Okay, well, right, right now, um, we're on board committee reports.
Madam Chair, I'll keep this short. Most of the Fab met last week, and, uh, Dr. Taylor presented his, um, his budget proposal. The emphasis being on teacher pay and trying to get us into a standard where we're competitive. Uh, we talked about the pay for substitute teachers and some of the premiums for Friday, and we discussed trying to increase our compensation plan for nutrition workers, which are abysmally paid. Um, the other thing that I would like to talk about is I went to the VSBA conference and the Capitol Conference. There are a number of legislative items. There was actually, I think, 118 legislative items reviewed. I will not go over all of them. However, one of the things that stands out is that there is in the budget a huge, uh, an excess. So, they're trying to delegate more money for, um, modernization and construction of schools. Um, the VSBA, um, has opposed any attempts to divest local school boards of their constitutional authority. There is trying to retrain, remove the, uh, support cap so that we can, um, hire, so that more of our, our personnel are covered. And, um, I think that's pretty much it. I have attached these documents to the committee reports section, so you have some of this information to review, and, um, Ms. Randall and I will be going as individuals, school board members, to lobby with our, our respective delegates.
Alright, is there any other committee reports for the board? Seeing none, that gives us to the superintendent's comments. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll make this very brief. Uh, what a wild, uh, couple of weeks we've had since our last school board meeting, uh, just two short weeks ago. I certainly wanna thank our teachers and staff, as well as our students, uh, and parents, as well as our principals and my team, uh, that have been working very hard, uh, despite a lot of, a lot of interruptions and a lot of instability. Um, and they've, they've done incredibly well. Uh, we, we've had, uh, clearly, as a, as a demonstration tonight and in our inboxes, a lot of parent voice. And I wanna thank the parents that came tonight, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one, we've received a lot of positive feedback from outside of the community about how Stafford County can sometimes disagree, but without being disagreeable. And in the local context of what that might look like in other parts of our broader community, that's a real positive. I'd also like to thank our parents that at the height of your frustration and the height of your concern and frustration across this community in lots of different dimensions, some folks found humor and tried to keep it light tonight, and that wasn't easy. Uh, it wasn't easy at all, actually, and because when you're pushed to your limits and you're pushed to, uh, your breaking point, uh, to show up in the first place and to advocate for children and advocate for your interests, we appreciate it. We thank you for it. We're glad that you're here. We hope you stick around for a few more meetings, not, uh, not that you all came for the budget presentation tonight very clearly, but, uh, man, that'd be cool if you did next year. Be awesome. Um, just throwing that out, just a suggestion. Because we'd love to keep you involved, um, and, and everybody else who's not here tonight, too. Uh, we have a, we have a lot of diverse interests in Stafford County. We have a lot of needs, and we have a lot of challenges, and the only way that we're gonna face those challenges successfully is when we do it together. And soon, we'll get over this, and we'll move forward. We're gonna work very hard to build trust with you, and we're gonna work very hard to build trust in this community so that teachers and parents and principals and school boards, that there's a seamless line of support for the kids in our community. So, with that, I do have a couple of updates. Um, I've had a great time, uh, visiting folks in this community. Uh, just last night, I met all of our PTO and PTA leaders from many of our schools. Not everybody was there, but we had a great time. The folks that did show up at Forge last night. Uh, I've been meeting with my parent advisory council, my student advisory council. I met with faith leaders in this community this past week, and it was a, it was a great meeting, because a lot of folks had said that they had never met some of their colleagues in the county, in the faith community before, and that was really positive. Got an opportunity to meet some of our business owners, business leaders and community leaders, all of which super focused on how we can support the schools and how we can build two-way partnerships together. How exciting is that? It's pretty fantastic, actually. Really warms your heart. We're doing something a little bit different this year. We're having some budget town halls in each magisterial district to talk about some of the issues that I raised tonight. There's a lot of things that are heavy on our hearts about how we're gonna move this school system past this pandemic, and we hope that you're gonna be involved with that. Um, I'm doing another listen and learn, uh, next week on Wednesday morning at Augustine Golf Club, and then I'll have another one after that at night, and I'm just gonna keep doing them just so that I can get to know you a little bit better and, uh, that I can get to understand your issues a little bit better. I'm just not gonna stop. I had a great opportunity to meet with the board, uh, over this past weekend, uh, at a retreat. And I gotta tell you, that was really positive, because, uh, bringing new school board members, uh, into, uh, a team and having nearly half of the board represented by new members, it's a steep learning curve. And I gotta tell you, our, our three new members are rock stars, and they're trying very hard um, and learning a lot in a short period of time, and, uh, they didn't, they didn't hesitate to give me some pretty strong marching orders. Um, they've tasked me to develop a communication plan between me and the board. They've tasked me, uh, to create a frequently asked question sheet, uh, that I can share on the school board's webpage about how school board meetings work and how the school board works. They've tasked me, uh, to help create a decision tree on how to solve problems at the school level, at the district level, so forth and so on, the classroom level. They've tasked me, uh, to create a framework for, uh, serving our constituents better through a constituent services office. They've also tasked me to create a digital, uh, comment option for public comment so that the folks that couldn't make it to a meeting like tonight, or didn't wanna stick around for three or four hours, that they could type their comments, and they would be read into the minutes in whole. How about that? Pretty fantastic. Um, and they, uh, made a commitment for their governance committee to create a governance handbook, a code of conduct, and to review governance policies. All of these things are huge step forwards, and these are things that this board created themselves. It's very impressive. I do wanna add one last thing before, uh, I yield my time, and that's to talk a little bit about transportation. I mentioned this a little bit, uh, when we, uh, did the budget presentation, and I would like to thank, uh, my colleague and assistant superintendent, Chris Fulmer, who is our CFO as well. He doubled duties, and, uh, he was a huge help and instrumental in, in this budget presentation, as well as, uh, Sandra Osborne, who's our communications director. She helped put together some of the pretty, uh, materials that we had tonight, and Rebecca Towery, who helped with the presentation. But, uh, I noted that we're gonna be sending out a survey tomorrow, and here's what I hope. Please take it really seriously, and here's why. Because like, uh, your public comments that we'll collect digitally, um, I'll be sharing out all of the comments that are submitted on this survey, the raw data. All of it. Um, because I wanna build trust with you by showing, uh, you that, uh, we can do a synthesized report of our data collection and then show you the data that helped make that report. Because we wanna hear what you think about how the past couple of years have gone in terms of bell schedules and transportation, and certain things that you think that will help make us better. Now, don't get me wrong, we got some ideas, but we also think that you have ideas, too, and we wanna leave that door open, uh, so that you can come in and share those ideas with us. I'm gonna present that information to the board on February 8th, which means the turnaround time for the survey is one week. So, check your spam boxes where all my other surveys go. And, uh, make sure that that gets filled out, if you don't mind. Um, and on February 8th, uh, the board's, uh, transportation committee, the ad hoc committee that they put together last year, is also gonna be making a presentation for their findings, so it's kinda, kinda be the transportation-themed night. Um, and hopefully, uh, we'll get some, some settled direction on, uh, on where we'd like to go in the future, and allow an opportunity for, uh, you to opine on that and for you to share some of your thoughts, and, uh, that we can set a clear direction for what bell schedules will look like for next school year, what bus times will look like, and the order in which buses will go, and how long the school day is gonna be, which is really important to me. So, with that, um, I just wanna thank, uh, the board for, uh, this opportunity. Um, you have presented me with a tremendous amount of learning opportunities, and as a, uh, teacher and a learner, um, I, I definitely have enjoyed my time and enjoyed these learning opportunities, and I look forward to the future, because I do know that the future is bright. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. That brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Randall. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Your question's still being researched, Ms. Sigmund. That brings us to action items. 10.01, consideration of recent CDC quarantine guidance change. Now, for action items, we do have a motion before we take a vote for, and we can have a motion, uh, before discussion, we can have a motion for purposes of discussion. Is there anyone that would?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair, 10.01.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Randall and second by Dr. Warner. You can do the presentation now.
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board, Dr. Taylor. I am available to answer any questions about this new guidance that came out from the CDC. We also have virtually with us Allison Balms-John. She is the population health coordinator at the VDH. She helped us answer your questions from the last board meeting, and she is available to answer any additional questions that you have. Collette Hokanna, our nurse administrator, was also supposed to be on, so she can help us answer any questions or to elaborate more on the answers that we provided to you with your questions.
Would have any questions for?
I mean, I, I have many questions, clearly. Where are the two people you're talking about? Oh, they're up there.
Yeah, they're virtual. They're in the ceiling.
That's weird. Uh, alright, just to clarify, first of all, I mean, I, I have questions about this, but they're all, I, I need actual real information from the health department as, as well, and I'm hoping that real information will help inform and help these guys see, um, have a little bit more enlightenment as to what's going on here. So, my first question, most of my questions are for the health department directly. Um, I would like to know what types of health education on any type of viral outbreak or bacterial illness that they've done since the pandemic started. Or do they have any, um, age-appropriate level training that they're doing? Are they going into the schools and teaching kids about viral loads and sickness and those kinds of things? And I'm gonna ask that one first.
Okay.
As a general question.
Ms. Hall said.
Yes, it relates to isolation.
Before, before we get to the general questions, can we look at the, the issues related to the quarantine and the, whether the?
Well, I'm hoping they feed into it by their answer. Alright, so you guys can ask your questions.
Do you have another question?
I, I do, but I, I feel like the, the, the biggest thing's here, I mean, if you read what we've put together here, which I understand, I mean, I did this for a living for a really long time, and even I can't figure out how we came up with this. Like, I literally cannot understand, and if I can't understand it, I don't know how the parents understand. You know, we've got six days, six to 10 days of isolation. If you came in contact with somebody, but you don't know when you came in contact with that person, because you don't actually know how long the virus incubates for. And if you don't know how long the incubation period is, and you can't actually go back and figure out when you came in contact with that illness, and then you're gonna take a test, which we don't even know when your exposure was, so if you're mild symptom or whatever, you could be well over it right at the time you're being quarantined. Is that correct? Which is almost unfair, because then you have to get another test how many days later. Like, none of this makes any sense to me. It doesn't speak to any of the consistency and education that we need to get reinstilled in our schools. Now, where there are some really strong mitigation strategies available, I don't think quarantine and isolation is it. So, I'm asking, what are our other issue, like, how do we, how are we supposed to take this information? Right? When it does, it's, I know where the guidance comes from, and I know what they're doing. There's a lot of CYA involved. I get it, okay? I did it for a long time, but at the end of the day, we're not answering the right and appropriate questions about how a normal disease process gets integrated into a school system without causing this level of distraction and disruption. I didn't know if you were gonna speak.
Oh, no, I'm waiting.
Okay. Um, so, so I'm trying to figure out, if we did this every flu season, what would our lives be like? Right? If we're gonna do this now, right now, to implement it back in, when we're trying to get these kids back to some semblance of normal. This mean we've got kids, we're gonna unmask kids eventually, so what does that mean? All the unmasked kids are just gonna have to quarantine for, even if we reduce it, like, how do we get our kids to stay in school? I mean, I've got parents telling me their kids are out of school 15 and 20 days on quarantines, and some parents have had to quarantine their kids two or three times, like, because they were of close contact. In school, in the supermarket, in the other places, they're not wearing masks, which, by the way, they're not wearing masks anywhere but school. So, at, so at the end of the day, the quarantine and isolation protocol literally makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Maybe we should have a, a recap of what the background is here and what the proposal is. As I understand it, the proposal is for the school board to consider reducing the quarantine periods.
That is correct.
Okay, so could you just give us the, the, the current periods and the, the potential shortened periods that is before this board for consideration?
Absolutely. So, for quarantine, for a direct exposure, it's seven days with a negative test, 10 days without, and parents are still opting to do the 14-day, which is the goal, say, we don't have a lot of parents that are doing that, but many of them are doing the seven and the 10-day for quarantine.
So, that, that is the current? So that is the current requirement?
That is the current. That's for quarantine. For isolation, it is 10 days. So with this new guidance that came out over the holiday, it was to reduce down to five days. And then if you do return from day six to 10, you are required to wear a well-fitted mask.
All right.
According to the CDC guidance.
And what about the isolation, the current isolation?
Current isolation is 10 days.
Okay. The current is 10, and what is the proposed?
I need to get my questions up. Can I do that?
Reduced to five.
No, 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 I have other questions on the email.
Dr. Chase?
So I just, in this, the preparation that you've done here, it talks about CDC and then it talks about VDH. And so is this guidance from the CDC or is this guidance from the VDH?
A combination of both.
A combination of both. So what are the two pieces? What's CDC, what's VDH?
I don't know what specific question you're talking about. I mean, if you can reference which one, I can have Allison jump on and see if she can answer that question.
Okay.
But a lot of times, and I don't want to speak for Allison because she does work for the VDH, but a lot of times the CDC will come out with guidance that the VDH will either adopt or they will embed in their interim guidance for schools.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out what the CDC is recommending.
The CDC is recommending to reduce down to five days for both quarantine and isolation.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Sigmund.
Thank you for kind of simplifying that for us. I just want to clarify, based on what I'm reading, are we not considering any of the... There's some stuff down here about restricting children's access to education based on their vaccination status. Is that not something we're considering at all? Because that's what's on our statement here. It says that students who are vaccinated can come back to school more quickly than students who are not?
Correct. So if you...
Right here.
If you... Are you talking about quarantine or isolation, Mrs. Sigmund?
If the individual is unvaccinated or has not yet gotten the dose, the booster dosed, the individual should quarantine for five days as long as they do not develop symptoms. If they have received a booster or a second shot, they do not need to quarantine following an exposure, but should wear a mask for 10 days after the exposure went around others. I thought we don't discriminate based on health status in this county.
Excuse me. If the audience would please be respectful for the board as we asked our questions and try to get information in order to make a decision, we would appreciate it because we cannot conduct business with constant interruptions. Ms. Sigmund?
So that's what I'm trying to figure out, is we are recommending that we restrict access based on health status.
Allison, I don't know if you want to address that question. That's something we have talked about in our weekly meetings. Allison, are you there to address that?
Yeah, I'm here to address that. So, I mean, this is just straight out of the CDC guidance. 99% of the time, VDH adopts CDC guidance. This is consistent with what's already been done when it comes to quarantines, that individuals who are fully vaccinated should be monitoring closely for symptoms. Testing is recommended, but they do not have to complete that quarantine period at home. Individuals who are unvaccinated do need to complete a quarantine period at home. So that is actually not a large change in this guidance. It's just the lesser time period for the quarantine.
So I apologize if I could because, as it turns out, Tom didn't get my original email, which had a separate set of questions related to this, which is why you look so confused and I feel frustrated. So, also because, like, three hours past my bedtime, as anyone will tell you.
Right.
But anyway, I do believe that, I mean, we still have a really important question in front of us, which is, and I will state this, even though I know no one wants to hear this, in the United States of America, you cannot legally quarantine a healthy individual. That's just the way it is. I have had Health Department after Health Department, I mean, I worked for Health Department where we tried to quarantine an individual with active TB, and we were told no, and he was going to work and everything else. But because of the HIPAA rules and because of the fact that he has the right to privacy and he doesn't have to self-report it, even though he had to go to DOT and all, he wasn't abiding by his DOT, none of that was happening. And the judge specifically said to us, and he was sick, you cannot legally quarantine a healthy person in this country. It is not enforceable unless, and then he gave like a list of things, but so I don't understand why we continue to quarantine our healthy kids and keep them away when, I mean, honestly, can we, we have to really start to look at this from a sense, from the sense of rebuilding. Like, from the second this pandemic was declared, a recovery plan should have been put in place at the school level with the help of the Health Department that addressed all these issues based upon a basic approach, which they've always known was out there. Pandemic curves are not new information. It's just not. So I just look at this and I think to myself, I mean, there is so much stuff in here. Our kids, individuals can participate in sports as long as they can adhere to strict mask usage and distance on six to 10 days. I mean, where are our kids going to school? I feel like, I do feel like we're in Nazi Germany sometimes, and I'm not trying to be argumentative with you. I know it's not your rule, so please don't take that way, take it that way. But at the end of the day, I think we need to start going back down to brass taxes and really looking at the mitigation strategies, the protocols that are in place for isolation and quarantine, and how to safely and effectively move past this black hole that these kids have been stuck in. And I don't know how to do that with what I'm looking at right here, except to say that it doesn't make sense. None of this makes sense to me. None of this actually tracks back to an effective COVID mitigation strategy.
All right, is there anyone else on the board that has any comments or questions? If we're not ready to make a decision on this, we can have a vote, and if this doesn't passes, then we will stay with the current policy, which would keep our students out longer, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
This reduces the requirement for the quarantine, but if the board is not prepared to move forward on it, we can leave what we have in place.
Madam Chair, I would ask you to call the question.
I had a point I wanted to make. I had a discussion I wanted to...
We did not all get a chance, so...
Okay.
Almas Randall.
I'm kind of struggling with this with the same reason as Ms. Sigmund just exposed, was the, like, I'm better with the five-day, but I'm not okay with some of the other details of this. I'm just not comfortable with that right now. So I don't, I want to support less time because our current policy is seven, 10, and 14, and that took me two months to get that up. And I just want less and less because gold standard is in-person, but I'm not for discriminating for those that are vaccinated versus unvaccinated. I'm not at all for that. So that's just my position.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Ms. Guy?
I'm just, excuse me. I don't even understand, how do we know who's vaccinated or not vaccinated? Or do they have to say, "I'm vaccinated, so I can come back early," or how does that...
So when we go through the contact tracing, that's one of the questions that we ask.
So you are asking that?
Correct.
Madam Chair. Oh, Maureen.
Did Dr. Warner, I want to give everybody a chance.
The reason that the difference between vaccinated and unvaccinated is because your risk is different. If you're unvaccinated, you're more likely to get it if you're exposed. So...
Excuse me, please respect the process here. This is the business part of our meeting. Is there a interest in amending the motion to table this, or does the board want to go forward with the...
I would move to table.
I would like to call the question.
Well, you could make a substitute motion, if you wish.
Sure. So I...
What would the...
To table this indefinitely? I don't know.
Can I, I'm sorry, Dr. Taylor has asked if I can, or has said if it would be okay, since the Health Department's on the phone, I'd like to ask a few of these questions. They may help, though.
Let's get through this.
I'll withdraw my motion if I have to. If we have further discussion, I'm not supposed, we're not supposed to be here, right?
I was going to say, if we have a substitute motion, we have to vote on the substitute motion.
Okay.
So your substitute motion is to table it?
Correct.
All right, and that's to a date uncertain?
Correct.
All right, is there a second to that motion? Motion fails for no second. That brings us back. You have a question. We're going to need to move forward. Dr. Chase has called for the question. I wanted to give the people that had not had an opportunity to speak to it. So I think at this point, we need to call for the question, which means all in favor of the motion to approve this change as recommended by the staff. Dr. Taylor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
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 Madam Clerk, would you poll the board, please?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Guy?
Aye.
Ms. Halsted?
No.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Ms. Randall?
No.
Ms. Sigmund?
No.
Dr. Warner?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion fails.
Thank you. That brings us to 11.02, adoption of a resolution and award of two delivery orders, one to Bluebird. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm moving ahead. That was two on the next one. Approval of the 2022-2023 Middle School Program of Studies course catalog. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the course catalog? Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Well, let's just go down the row. Would you like to start? Dr. Chase, do you have any discussion? No? Dr. Warner?
I just would like to say, I think that this is a great course of study, but I would like more clarity to the parents of what programs we actually can and cannot offer because I know there's a lot of teaching shortage, teacher shortages. So there's a lot of these electives that aren't even really offered. I also would like to say that maybe instead of asking students to rank all of them, they could just pick their top 10, and we could focus on the ones that they're most interested in and the ones that we're most likely to have teachers for.
So, second question first. The plan is to have students rank where are the top 10 choices? And then, as the program of study says in several places in the program, that it depends on staffing, to a large extent, whether the elective options can be offered.
I would just like to offer 10 really great electives and have them be successful, then make promises we can't deliver on, and build our program, because I just worry about that. But I think that ideally, I think the program of study is good. I like the fact that our middle school students have more options.
Ms. Sigmund.
I've expressed my concerns on the Middle School Program of Study. I won't reiterate them, and I appreciate you taking the time to review them with me and look forward to another three years as a middle school parent. Thank you.
Ms. Guy?
I agree. I think the program of study looks fantastic, but I think with current staffing shortage, historical staffing shortage for the past couple of years, I think we need to be slightly a little bit more realistic. Having kids in classes where we don't have the teachers for them or, you know, having their hopes get dashed. I mean, the awesome thing about middle school, you're looking forward to it by third, fourth, fifth grade, is having those electives. And when you get there and they don't manifest, it's really frustrating. So I just think we need to be a little bit more realistic with what we do have instead of what we hope to be able to do.
Ms. Halsted?
I mean, I love the, oh, sorry. Aren't I loud enough without it? I love it, too, but I'm so concerned with the numbers that we're seeing, like, with kids being behind in math and all that other stuff, and I just feel like taking away. But I feel like it's, to me, it's a lose-lose, right? Because here's this one with all these wonderful opportunities and stuff for the kids, but I don't like the idea of giving up core subjects for that. So, and I don't even know enough about it to speak really well on it, it's just what I've read. So for me, I'm just not comfortable.
I really respect the amount of time that you and Dr. Strike gave for me today. I still have my concerns. I see the picture. I'm just not a fan of the vertical conversation from elementary to middle, middle to high, where a child that comes out of fifth grade, where they just maybe changed a couple of classes, to then being responsible for eight graded classes. As a sixth grader, I just feel that that's uncomfortable for me. Also, the, you know, the understanding, the staffing shortages, but still feeling uncomfortable for me about having teachers that are told, you know, "We need a computer science teacher." Boom, you're it. They already have one planning period, and then now they're having to do flex time planning plus their elective period and plus their regular classing. And I know that's staffing and not program of study, but I feel like the program of study is directing the staffing, which, like I said, is also further complex by teacher shortages. I also think that I'm a little concerned about the work time that students have for math, especially with two years of being behind to have this kind of every other day or not even enough time to get into writing, which, you know, at the high school level is such a problem currently, but also because of COVID, also because of a million other things. So this isn't something that I can support. I feel like the kids are getting dessert before their dinner. There's a choice of their electives, which is nice, but I still feel like there's factions of the electives that serve just certain students. It's not equitable between some of the kids that are needing extra support. And I feel like we need to be eating our meal of our cores before we feed our electives. So I will not be supporting this this evening, but I know that it will be supported enough on this board because I wouldn't want to create a tornado of middle, for middle school planning next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. I'm going to be supporting this motion because I think we need to have a course catalog for our middle schoolers and their parents to start reviewing and getting ready for next year. And I trust Dr. Taylor is hearing what the board is saying and will, you know, take those comments into consideration as we move forward. I know I've had concerns in the past about offering courses that there's just no likelihood we're going to have somebody to teach. And I know we footnote it in the catalog, but I think, I agree with Ms. Guy, it's hard to not get what you sign up for when there's no reasonable expectation we're even going to have somebody for it. So I think we need to move forward and get ready to get those registrations in line. So all in favor of the motion to approve the 10.02? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Would you poll the board, please, Ms. Marko?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Guy?
Aye.
Ms. Halsted?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
No.
Ms. Sigmund?
No.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
All right. 10.03, approval of recommended changes to the 2021-2022 school calendar and authorization for the superintendent to make emergency calendar changes in the future as needed with ratification by the board at a subsequent board meeting. Dr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am, I have one additional request to add to this list, and that is the request that there be no further inclement weather. We would like to take a break from that until next year. Thank you.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, motion to approve 10.03?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Dr. Chase?
I just wanted to clarify that we are just giving you approval for emergency changes for this year? Otherwise, we would need to go to policy, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would also like to ask, is this current right now with the number of days that we have? I know we've been using our ASYNs, and if you could give me a head count as to where are we?
Yes, we're in the whole three asynchronous days, which is okay, because we've got seven more. But we are, in terms of in-person hours, we are two hours short. So, we need to take at least a day right now. So, what this motion is definitely requesting is that February 18th, which is a Friday on a four-day weekend, would be converted to a regular school day. And we would look at the menu of options presented to the board right now should we find ourselves in another unfortunate situation.
Yes.
I have just one question. Do you know true that the additional days that we might be doing, trying to give parents to have those menus and what the trigger points would be? So that they can at least anticipate the presidential.
Thank you, actually. Madam Chair, that is actually part of why I'm asking for this emergency power, so that we don't have to wait for another board meeting for us to notify families of a change in the calendar. It can be so frustrating to have to adjust for childcare and a bunch of other things. So, it is, that's really the progeny of this request for right now.
Well, that completes the action items that we have on the agenda.
We have to vote.
We have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a long day. Go ahead, we know you're tired.
It is a long day. This should be fairly simple, I hope. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yeah, can we take a five-minute break before we move forward? I'm gonna confirm, Ms. Sigmund, the instructions that we're getting. Thank you. Well, it's almost tomorrow. We wanna call the meeting back to order. Ms. Sigmund, did you have a new motion? And that will be action item 10.04.
I do, thank you. And thank you to everyone who helped me figure this out. I move that we amend our prior, our action from Thursday that read, "We, the school board, direct the superintendent to continue to enforce the universal mask mandate with no parental opt-out for pre-K to 12 students, staff, and visitors in school buildings consistent with the 2021 Virginia Acts, Chapter 456, SB 1303, in effect through August 1, 2022, including exemptions identified by the CDC and the following additional exemptions: individuals eating, drinking, or sleeping; individuals exercising or using exercise equipment; any person who is playing a musical instrument when wearing a mask would inhibit the playing of the instrument so long as at least six feet of any physical distance can be maintained from other persons; any person who has trouble breathing or is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance; any person who has a disability or meets at-risk criteria for those assisting such persons, including but not limited to individuals with individualized education plan or 504 plan under the Rehabilitation Act, where wearing a mask would inhibit communication or the receiving of services when necessary to participate in a religious ritual, and persons with health conditions or disabilities that prohibit wearing a mask. To read that the school board direct the superintendent to continue enforce, to enforce the universal mask mandate for pre-K to 12 students, staff, and visitors in school buildings consistent with the 2021 Virginia Acts, Chapter 456, SB 1303, in effect through August 1, 2022, including exemptions as provided by parents."
That's it. Is there a second?
I second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Before we have discussion, I'm advised by our parliamentarian that the motion to amend something previously adopted requires a two-thirds majority vote. So, we can have discussion.
I would just like to ask, do we have virtual options for parents who are going to want it?
Immediately, I'm gonna ask, actually, Dr. Jones, if he'll elaborate on this if necessary. But yes, we do have virtual options should we need it.
And what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is that the board definitely deliberate over this issue, because there is a lack of clarity for the board to consider right now. You do have a pending litigation that is being on the table, and the board should definitely consider all of its options. I don't have a direct recommendation for you this evening, because we are prepared to do either of the options that the board is considering.
I have a question.
Ms. Guy?
When you say you do have a virtual option, which is great, is that forcing teachers to concurrently teach who don't want to? Or how does that play out?
In many instances, teachers would have to teach concurrently.
Is that what is happening for parents who are being told that their children cannot attend school without their masks right now?
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Randall?
Yes, Madam Chair. How many students have we had that were not been allowed to come into the schools?
The most recent data that I have is from just on Monday, and we had 20 students that did not come into schools division-wide because of the mask requirement. And there was 20 refusals at the door. We had seven students who initially entered the building refusing to wear masks, but then eventually wore masks. And so far, we've received 54 mask exemption requests.
Can I say something?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you haven't spoken yet. Go ahead.
I, so it's more of a, I guess it's like a question, statement question or whatever it is. I mean, I think we've heard enough tonight from everyone to kind of really feel the passion that the parents have for education. I think that we would be looking at maybe, I don't think we're looking at an all-out. Tomorrow, everybody's filling an exemption and putting it out. So, we're saying, this wording, Maureen, that you guys have put in front of us just says, "with parent exemption." What, can you read the last word to me? The last line?
Including exemptions identified by parents.
Identified by parents, okay.
I realize that that probably will include everything else on the list. I could reread the list and add parent choice at the end of it, if that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want it to be a little clearer, the wording to be a little clearer, that it's with parent choice.
So, is this a substitute motion? Or are we amending a motion? What are we doing here?
What we are discussing is a motion Ms. Sigmund is making for this board to amend something that has previously been adopted, which was the motion adopted at the meeting last Thursday. So, this motion is to amend that motion. Because it is a motion to amend something previously adopted, it requires a two-thirds majority of this board to pass.
My question was just, the motion was made and seconded, and then all of a sudden, we're talking about changing the motion.
No, I think Ms. Halsted is asking for it to be read again, because it is, it's late. So, and this is very important that we understand what we're asked to vote on.
I move that the school board direct the superintendent to continue to enforce the universal mask mandate for pre-K to 12 students, staff, visitors in school buildings consistent with 2021 Virginia Acts, Chapter 56, SB 1303, in effect through August 2022, including the following exemptions, I'm sorry, including exemptions identified by the CDC and the following additional exemptions: individuals eating, drinking, or sleeping; individuals exercising or using exercise equipment; any person who is playing a musical instrument when wearing a mask would inhibit the playing of the instrument so long as at least six feet of physical distance can be maintained from other persons; any person who has trouble breathing or is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance; any person who has a disability or meets at-risk criteria for those assisting such persons, including but not limited to individuals with individualized education plans or 504 plans under the Rehabilitation Act, where wearing a mask would inhibit communication or receiving services when necessary to participate in a religious ritual; persons with physical health conditions or disabilities that prohibit wearing a mask, or, which would become number eight, parental choice.
Madam Chair, I have a question, since this motion involves directing the superintendent to do something, which will mean directing the staff to do something. I'd like to know the intent of how this would translate to transportation in the board's view, and as well as our federal Head Start program.
Ms. Sigmund, could you address that part of your motion?
Sure. As the CDC does not have exemptions, I understand that the CDC's transportation is an order. That is why, and the CDC does indicate that school buses are part of public transportation, which is governed by an order, which is why I have come to the belief that it is recommended in schools, because it is not an order. I am not seeking to amend the order that deals with school buses or transportation. That's much higher pay grade than me.
Head Start, I'm assuming, in the same camp?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry.
It may be that that needs to be clarified, because the motion has stated, you did say the universal mask mandate. So, universal is across the board. But we're still discussing this now, but as the motion stands, it would be.
Listen, I asked for help like an hour ago, and I just got told to read this motion, take out the words I don't want, read it again with the words I do want, and now we're quibbling. So, please help me do this the right way, instead of trying to make me look like an idiot. Okay? Please just make the substitute motion how like you want me to.
Ms. Sigmund?
I mean, seriously.
Let me be clear. No one is trying to make anyone look.
I asked these questions back there, and you told me to take out the words I didn't want and add, you know, we talked about this.
Excuse me, Ms. Sigmund, I did not give you advice on this. I said you need to state the motion with the changes that you want in it, because your intention is to amend it. I cannot tell you what to put in it. That is your motion and your choice. What we're asking for is clarification, because the motion is going to--
The motion says school buildings.
Let me just finish. Let me just finish. The motion is going to direct the superintendent, and I think, and he's asking, because as it's stated, it would be a universal mask mandate.
Correct.
So, is it--
As identified by the CDC. If there are, hi, I mean, buses aren't mentioned on here in this motion.
So, that's my question. It says universal masking mandate in school buildings, right? It doesn't specifically say, I mean, universal. I understand where you're thinking the word "universal" is, but I say universe, I'm thinking the way she's reading it, just universal to the building, because she specifically says the building.
I'm honestly trying to keep it as similar as it was, because I don't have a problem having a mask mandate on the books. That is honestly what the governor recommended, just to give the parents the opt-out. So, I'm literally trying to change it as little as possible, because I believe in the integrity of the original motion, with the exception of the three little words, "no parent opt-out." Correct. If there's a better way to do that, please advise me, because we didn't mention Head Start before. We didn't mention buses before. I'm literally just trying to address three words.
And there was no need to address Head Start, because it was universal, and the Head Start is in one of our buildings. So, that's why there wasn't a need to do that.
And I was under, we were advised that Head Start had its own rules regardless. So, I didn't think we had to readdress this in our own county policy, because it is already covered under a federal regulation, or rule, or whatever it's called.
Ms. Randall? Madam Chair, and we are speaking of students, not visitors, not staff. Is that correct? I don't have it written in front. I'm a paper person, I haven't written in front of me, so I'm just not seeing it.
I see visitors in here. I'm on the fence on visitors. I understand that staff is also, was included in this, because they are covered under a different mandate from Department of Labor, which we cannot overturn at this point, because that still resides in Richmond. So, as much as I would like to talk about that right now, that's not on the table for discussion. My goal is to follow the executive order number two, or to the best of our ability, while still strongly recommending all other COVID recommendations, from top to bottom, from hand washing to vaccination and anything in between that families decide is best for them. And that's all I'm trying to do.
I think it's one of the things that I, in, you know, other jurisdictions, I did try to look up their meetings, and they also met behind closed doors with their legal teams as well. And one of the things that I actually ended up doing was picking up the phone and calling members in other jurisdictions. And one of them I spoke with, I won't call out, but what I liked about what she said was, when we made a decision, it felt like it was this or this was our choice. And what I liked about what they did was they made it, and it's similar to what you're reading, to me, it's not choosing executive order two over 1303. It's 1303 and executive order two. So, I'm more comfortable marrying the two together. I'm just one, you know, we can't go as deep and wide as staff.
No.
But, and we can do students, except for Head Start, and--
And this, for me, was, I guess I'll get to my discussion.
And, but the visitor piece is still, where I'm kind of like, where are we?
I'm uncomfortable with visitors to school, because I think that--
I just--
The more you expand the audience of people who can come into the school, the greater you--
Can you turn your microphone on, please, Dr. Warner?
I'm uncomfortable with allowing visitors to the school go mask-free. I think that, I think that it creates an environment where somebody could come in, and the greater the risk that they could expose people.
I am very, I am totally okay with one variable at a time. I also worry about throwing out a contact trace curveball by the UPS guy on which Tuesday, two weeks ago, could impact things for our schools. I'm one thing at a time. I'll tell you what, as a constituent, just a, you know, Joe's citizen, the whole discussion has been EO2 is trying to reinforce Virginia code parents' rights. And then come in SB 1303, they appear to conflict. And I, you know, I went to law school long enough to take legal research and writing, so I looked it up. And the case law in Virginia says that if two laws seem to conflict, you must do your best to synthesize them and carry out the original intent of, or the primary intent of both laws. It's Commonwealth versus Zamianno, if anyone wants to look it up. And that's what caused me to lose a little bit of sleep, because I don't feel like we're doing a good job synthesizing that and bringing that together. And that's something I think case law and our, you know, legal, I think our legal burden kind of is met when we try to, when we try to do that. Plus, public feedback, plus just seeing other districts having success in doing this. And, you know, also, reading what their legal advice may have been, the quotes that their lawyers have put out, or their board spokespeople have put out about why they've made that decision, and I thought it was worth revisiting, because I just, I don't feel right with the legal. I feel like our legal is burden, our burden is met by doing both as directed.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
So, I mean, clearly, I agree with Maureen. I, can you help everyone understand, especially those who are concerned about this, you know, the parent option, or whatever? You say you're prepared for both. So, that means you have a letter ready to go to the parents to say you cannot opt-out. We've got all our mitigation strategies are still in effect. You're ready to have, like, everybody gets a hand sanitizer bottle on their way into school. I'm joking, because it is late, but also curious. Like, let's help put everybody at risk. Maureen's right. The community's right. This was, I don't believe, we know, I don't believe it was, and I would never want it to be the authority of this board, by the way, to have to tell a parent what to do with their child, or how to raise their child. I mean, you know, I use the analogy today jokingly, but you know, it's like-- I mean, you know, I use the analogy today jokingly, but, you know, it's like you telling me your child hates bananas, but I force your child to eat a banana every day because I think the banana makes him better or gives him more power somehow or another. So, that being said, and having to really compartmentalize this issue and begin, we need a starting point to move forward. This seems to be it for me. It's very, it can be a very phased approach to it. It allows the parents the freedom, maybe tonight to come, maybe not tonight, it's late, don't wake up your kids, you know, to begin to explain the process of, I'm asking, we still have a ton of kids who are afraid to unmask. We have to undo the damage we've done already with masks before we can really move these kids forward. I don't think tomorrow we're going to find, you know, 30,000 Stafford County students showing up without masks. I think we'd like to see it mitigated, but I do agree, it's time to admit that EO2 and SB 1303 are not in conflict per se, but we have to marry them, and we have to make sure that the intent of the governor with the intent of the law are both because legally the burden is both.
Ms. Scott.
So, if this passes, will we be able to give, or do we have the funds or the availability to give N95 masks to all the staff? Because there's a lot of staff who, you know, I mean, we have their survey, it's 78% of them want masks.
I've got two questions on the table. I'll answer the N95 mask question. Now, we actually distributed N95 masks to every staff member at every school on Friday. So, that's been done. And that is a part of PPE that our staff has access to. They do have a certain duck bill-like quality to the ones that we purchased, but we, they are the top-of-the-line option for safety for those who need it, those who want it. To answer Mrs. Halsted's question, no, it's probably not a great idea to do this in less than, you know, a few hours because our bus drivers will start waking up in about four or five hours and hit the road, and, you know, there's a little bit of confusion. And the more time we can give staff on any kind of decision, period, the better. I think that that speaks to the governor's lead time even in trying to give a week to staff to make adjustments. I think that those things are helpful. I'm not saying we need that much time, but any time that we give staff in a gracious move in this type of change would be helpful. And I think, I think we are prepared for this inevitability. I think there's every single person in Stafford County cannot wait till we have a mask-free Stafford County, every single person.
As a newbie, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But, but I think, you know, there is some trepidation. I think we have a long road to go in terms of dealing with some of the emotional distress and some of the safety concerns and dealing with some of that. And that's, that's not a super overnight process, as we all know, with our kids and with our adults. So, it is going to be a struggle, but I think we've all been conditioned to be prepared for this inevitability at some point.
Again, newbie here, what would you say on your experience would be a reasonable or recommended amount of time to make this change? And could we potentially use that time to provide some very, I don't know the right word, but in-depth educational materials to the families about the impact of this change and how to make that decision for their child?
The more in-depth materials that you want us to produce, the longer that timeline...
Well, I don't know if there's stuff that exists, links to places where this stuff exists, even our COVID, I don't know, our COVID dashboard, but just something so that it's not just here is the rule or the change, but this is why and this is how parents' choice is a thing.
And I think that the board will be prepared to hear from an equally vocal group of constituents that are concerned about that type of decision too.
We already have.
And will want to have some kind of conversation about that because this was not something that was on your agenda. But to that point, we would be ready as soon as the board requires us to be ready because that's our job. And we are ready to move forward when the board decides that we're ready to move forward.
So, Madam Chair, I think, you know, we have, I mean, the room tonight was one side, but good God, we know we've got at least that many or more of emails for the other way of thinking, feeling. And I don't feel like an overnight decision, you know, an overnight switch is appropriate for those families, and I don't think it's an overnight switch is appropriate to our administrative teams, in the schools, in our central office, and our teachers. So, I would just ask that if we continue with this motion, that we make sure that we have identified a start date so that we are being incredibly, because this was not on our agenda. So, teachers are in bed, bus drivers are in bed, they don't have any idea that this is being spoken about, thought about, or considered at all. So, I would just say that we need to make sure that we have identified a date if this even passes.
Dr. Chase, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so, you know, back in, I think it was just Jan, November, I asked for something, and I was told that because the agenda had already been approved, I could not add something to the agenda. So, I gather the parliamentarian has now given us different guidance on that, but I would like to make that point, Madam Chair. Another point, I would just like clarity, what is 2/3 of 7? It's 5?
I was told it was 5.
Okay, so it's 5. I just wanted to know what's 2/3 of 7. So, I do want to reiterate, or it's late.
Well, it's actually early.
Yeah, really, it's early.
Isn't that tomorrow?
You know, I received, I received at least 500 emails, and I was tracking them for the first 280, and then I stopped. But in the first 280, 75% of folks wanted us to maintain our masks. So, I know there are a lot of people here, but there are not 270 people here. The other thing I want to say was when I was knocking on doors back in...
Excuse me, please let us talk.
When I was knocking on doors back before the election, what I heard most from people was they wanted their children to have in-person school. I am very concerned that we may have a situation where teachers won't be available or the health department will shut our schools for periods of time. And, I mean, we've definitely, if you read the Virginia School Board Association news every morning, there's one school division or another that's having to close a school for a week at a time or close another school for a week at a time. So, for me, this is really tough, and I still have the legal question and the fact that I would be voting against what our legal counsel recommended. So, I'll have to sit here and think for a little bit more, but offhand, I don't know that I can support this.
Well, let's go down, let's go down the line and, go ahead, Dr. Warner.
I'm concerned because in reading the Governor Youngkin's guidelines, it requires social distancing. We can't put six feet between students that are unmasked. So, those requirements are still in place. Those requirements are still part of his guidelines. So, you're trying to shift that, I'm very uncomfortable with this for, first of all, it goes against what legal counsel told us. So, we've got that. So, we either follow the law or we just make up our own, whatever. I'm concerned that we are in the midst of a surge where we have a 45% positivity rate, and we have hospitals that has a field hospital in the parking deck. Those are realities right now on the ground. We have people being sent home from the hospital to take care of themselves at home. So, we're going to add increased risk to our schools right now, right now. And I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with it. And now we want to make a decision at 12:05 in the morning, on, 12:05 in the morning, and what the people that were here tonight, the people that were here tonight do not represent all of the people in Stafford. And for every person who is here...
Dr. Warner, this is a board meeting. I've asked the public to refrain from commenting, and I would ask you to address your comments to the board. This is a board discussion of a motion before the board. I know it's very emotional, but we need to maintain our decorum for risking the audience.
We have received emails even tonight from people that are deeply upset about this. They feel like they suddenly have had the rug jerked out from under them because now suddenly we're going to change the rules, and they're very unhappy about it. And we have to consider those voices, too.
Ms. Sigmund.
Couple of things. We already feel like we've had the rug pulled out from under us because we were told we follow executive orders until they are proven to be illegal or otherwise. Northam, it's a five-day, a five-day education was challenged by Northam, and it was thrown out, and it was upheld until we had SB 1303. Second, we talked about, I guess that's the big thing, this shouldn't be a surprise. The second we put masks on, we should have a plan to take them off. Third, anytime the Supreme Court could have ruled on Monday, and we would have been ready to take the masks off on Tuesday. However, our legal burden is to both recommend masks and provide an opt-out, just like we have mandatory vaccinations to enter school, not one of them requires, is required for a student step foot through the door, which makes this piece of fabric from Hogwarts literally the only health requirement in the state of Virginia that prevents the child from receiving an in-person education. So, that is really, really, really frustrating. Thirdly, parents do not have an advocacy arm organized to send emails all day. We are a grassroots movement of parents that don't have another voice. And I forget that I'm up here now and not a parent, but parents don't have an advocacy arm to help send emails and to draft emails for them. They are organic. Thirdly, again, I don't, I feel like I am breaking the law by upholding, by ignoring an executive order that is in place, that is not overturned. And I know that the parents that were here and the parents at home and the parents who have sent emails and the parents who have said nothing at all would completely comply and understand that if we were held out of order, if the Supreme Court said we had to put masks back on, we would because we have been wearing them for two years because the government told us we had to. And that right now, the government is giving us the option to opt-out, so we are trying to exercise that right. We've been law-abiding. The idea that we wouldn't be if the law changed is, you know, silly at best and, you know, insulting at worst.
Ms. Guy.
I'm uncomfortable with this entire thing, just as Maureen, maybe for different reasons, but we can acknowledge that this ain't awesome, right? And I understand that parents don't have an advocacy arm to send emails all the time, nor do they have the ability to stay here as long as these people have. Like, you know, this group of individuals is not the entire county. It's absolutely not what we've seen in our emails. And so, and I know a lot of people consider coming, but with people not being masked, I mean, I understand that people don't want to be in the room with some people. Not everyone has access to an N95 mask, and so they chose not to come. That's on them, and that's fine, but I'm just saying, we have to acknowledge that not everybody can be here, right? If we throw out the legal advice, which I know the lawyer, because I've been following school board for a long, long time, the meetings, and I know that our lawyer is respected. I don't agree with a lot of her stuff, but I know that she is, she is very respected. But if we throw that out, I'm left with the belief that potentially masks do slow the transmission rate. But I also know that you can find a study that says that, and you can find another study that says it doesn't. So, then I'm left with the people who work in the schools, and the survey told us that 78% of them want masks to stay. And so, if I have to think about, well, we need teachers in the classrooms or on the video screen to teach, so I have to side with the educators. And so, I'm going to do what their survey asked.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. Ms. Halsted.
Well, this is not gonna end. Okay, so, I just, of course, I disagree. I mean, let's face it, I disagree. And I disagree on several reasons because, Dr. Chase, I also tracked emails, but lucky for me, I had a lot of free time in my hotel room, and I didn't stop at 270. I had over 975 emails in my inbox, a lot of those just to me personally and not addressed to the board because they know I'll advocate for them. A lot of them were teachers too petrified to talk that wouldn't take an SEA-based survey. That data is completely skewed, and as far as I know, the teachers in Stafford County, Virginia are dying inside for their kids, particularly the kindergarteners, first, second, and third graders. They can't communicate with their kids, their kids can't see what they have. We've got second graders where a teacher can't go to the bathroom for more than 10 minutes because they think she died of COVID on her way. Like, this is what we've done to kids. It's enough. It's sincerely enough. At what point do you justify the spread of COVID, which, by the way, if you know disease, you know they come highly transmissible, highly pathogenic. Highly pathogenic, low transmissibility. Low transmissibility, low pathogenicity, you know they center in a box. That's just the way they work. We are in the Omicron piece of this. It's super fast spreading amongst people, but it doesn't have the pathogenicity that the original viral strain had, okay? I'm going to address a couple of Dr. Warner's things. A 45% positivity rate for COVID, Omicron COVID is not high. No one, there's literally the statistics, if you look at them across the board, it's a pretty normal statistic. For this piece, 90% of the people that I know, which, by the way, I kept tally track because I like to do it with public health diseases, 90% of the families that I know, which at this point is over 200 people, now, they're not all my friends, clearly, I don't have that many friends, but they're friends and friends and friends of family, okay? They have all been told the same thing by the doctor. Yes, you tested positive for COVID, go home, drink your Gatorade, get your chicken soup, and rest because the body only heals itself when it's at rest. If your symptoms get worse, come back and see me, we're going to get you something different. So, I don't know where the rest of this comes from, but this is all very obscure to me that we're going to start to say that. And if teachers are going to quit, what happened to the teachers that threw themselves in front of bullets for kids and stuff like that? Now, we've got teachers that are going to, they're going to throw down and quit and give up pensions when they haven't even heard how we're going to protect them if they stay. They haven't even heard a mitigation strategy for what happens next so that we can easily remove these masks from people. That's short-sighted and very disappointing. I want to talk about a hospital for a minute. I have gone at Mary Washington Hospital probably more than I've gone at the poor health department people. And the reason I've gone at them for is because they have not delivered on the bed census requirements that I've asked them for. They have not told this public that they are always at capacity this time of year, and alternate field hospitals are very common. By the way, it's what should have happened when this pandemic first started. So, to use these statistics to continue to implement this kind of restriction on our families when all of these people have told you what's happening to their kids. I mean, my God, how much more do we need? So, who's going to leave the school? The kids that are afraid of COVID and we take off masks, or the kids that are tired of masks and done being afraid of COVID? We are in a lose-lose situation. Lucky for us, Governor Youngkin took that away from us. He was like, you know what? School board, parents' choice. We, I don't understand the continued need to look at this and beat it to death. I feel so frustrated for my constituents and my parents. The parents that do not want masks have lived for two years complying with mask mandates to make the people who are afraid feel better. When do the people who are afraid say to the people who aren't, it's okay? Go ahead and start living again. We're going to help you. When did this, when did the school system give up its obligation to help people feel better and safer? They didn't. When did the school, because we say parent choice, doesn't mean we're asking every kid to roll in, you know, whatever. It is amazing to me that we can, that we are going to continue to have this same conversation after almost four hours of comments from parents whose each story is heartfelt. after almost four hours of comments from parents whose each story is heartfelt, each one, from both sides heartfelt. And we have heard from the other side. We've heard from them for two years. The difference is, we're just now hearing from this side. So, to not allow parents today to build faith in this board, the option to, the requirement to opt out and just let the governor be upheld, again, we have failed to meet the burden of this board, and we have failed these people, and shame on us.
Ms. Randall.
I, I have said what I said before. You know, when we made the original decision to mask kids, I said this in our last meeting that, you know, I'd step away from the board, go cry in the bathroom, wipe my face, and come back out and vote mask them. It sucked. And, because I just never felt that it was the right thing to do, but it was the thing we had to do, okay? Now, we get into our, sorry, my husband's worried where I am. Now, we get into a discussion that, with our attorney, about the different sides and considerations. The 1303 versus, and we did it versus EO2. And I, you know, like I said, having talked to other divisions and listening to how they said it's an "and" for us, it's not an "or." Then, I reached out to some friends of mine that are teaching at, in Spotsy, and they have said it's amazing, it was a surprise to them how many kids came to class with their masks on, but that there was an incredible respect between those that were masked and those that were not. That was not what the teacher, who's actually going to be retiring, thought she was going to have. So, I kind of, I, I want to give our, you know, I feel like this is so late, and this is going to be a sledgehammer to a group of parents and a group of teachers that might have a different viewpoint at this late of an hour. So, I'm a little uncomfortable about, I'm very uncomfortable about that. I just feel like, as much as these folks have stated, and it wasn't an emergency meeting, it was a special called meeting, and.
What was the emergency?
Emergency special call meeting, but we followed the protocol of what we're supposed to do. We checked on all, checked those boxes. And I feel like you, we announced that we were having this meeting enough that, you know, we did get a lot of comments, a lot of emails, not verbals, but we did get a lot of emails. And I just feel like it's a little, as much as the, what the public said to us tonight about feeling not heard, not notified, I feel like there's another side that was, could feel that way tomorrow, not heard, not notified. So, making sure that we're very thorough about when we start this, or do we table this, or call another meeting, I don't know. I'm thinking about it. I'm really thinking about it because I, and I've had conversations with other board members where the "and" thing was what I really wanted to hear. And I didn't, and now I am, and I'm hearing it from other divisions. And I, I prefer the "and," but I'm thinking.
Okay, I guess I'll talk.
Can I make a little clarification because, on the survey we received? We did get a very informational survey outlining staff and faculty opinion on masking in buildings and non-school buildings. They got 1,700 responses, which is fantastic response for them. 78% of those 1,700 supported masking, which equate 4250 as school employees, so it's 32%, represents 32% of our school employees, based on that research, that support masking in the buildings.
This is not a matter of numbers for me. It's, it's, it's not a matter of the, the rates, the numbers. For me, this is a matter of the law. And as Governor Youngkin said, advise, listen to your principal, and trust the legal process. That's where I am. That's where my decision was based last week. There, there is a potential conflict there. Now, this matter is before the Supreme Court, and we are told, we are told, this is going to be, you know, an expedited decision. I mean, or I shouldn't say we're told. This is, this is what I've read, and this is what I've heard from people. My preference is to wait till we get that decision. If that decision says the executive order is enforceable, I'll be the first one asking for a meeting. But right now, I think it's a disservice to make a change when we're going to be getting the decision very shortly that could enforce it, could not. And, and I also share Ms. Randall's angst about not having notice to everyone for a
I'm happy to add a later date, a Monday, I mean, whatever's reasonable.
Of this, of this motion. I mean, I, I wish I had a crystal ball, and I know when that decision came out because, you know, to me, that's it.
Madam Chair, can I?
Well, can I, can I finish my statement? I promise it won't be much. I mean, it's already tomorrow, so, you know. Last week was a very hard decision for me. Those of you on the board know where I was last summer. I want parent choice. I haven't changed where I personally stand, where my district, a number of people, they're, they're, they're both sides. But, you know, my vote was based on the legal advice and the law of the executive order. There's, there's lots of talk, and, you know, lots of people were giving us interpretations. But I can tell you, I looked at every single word. You know, they're saying it's a recommendation, but the, what the, what the guidelines say is that we will follow, or the guidelines are recommendations, but what the law says, the Senate Bill 1303, says that we shall adhere to all currently applicable mitigation strategies. So, you know, this, I'm not trying to give a legal analysis here, but I studied it, I heard what our attorney said, and that was the basis for my vote. I, I respectfully, you know, advise my colleagues that, that I will not support a change at this point. If the Supreme Court decision is that that executive order is enforceable, you know, I'm, you know, I'm here for, for a meeting. I'm, I'm hoping, I, I heard maybe it would be this week, but we still don't, we still don't have it yet. So, that is the reason why I'm not going to support this motion tonight. We can, you know, vote on it if you, if you want to defer it, you know, that would be, you know, I don't, I don't know if, if someone wanted to make a friendly emotion amendment, that could be done. But at this point, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. You know, we can, we can take the vote. It does require five votes.
Let's just call the question.
All right. All in favor, all in favor of the motion to amend the.
Madam Chair, can I give a friendly motion?
Motion?
Well, you can, you can ask. A friendly, a friendly amendment is only if the motion maker and the second agree to it.
So, would you be comfortable with moving this decision to Monday so that we can see if we get a legal opinion?
I feel like if we get a legal opinion, we're going to have to reconsider anyway.
Well, I also feel like it's a, an opportunity to, you know, for, because we brought this on so late that it gives other, I mean, we've heard a lot. I'm not going to say we're going to hear anything different, but I just don't want to, like, feel like we're sucker punching some staff that maybe not are aware. I'm just wondering if that would be.
We got the executive order, and we got feedback. And then, we voted, and we got feedback. And then, we met, and, you know, just like in regular school board cycles, we always get feedback, the meeting after something happens. So, we've continued to get feedback. And as we're sitting here, we're getting feedback. I feel like we either need to call the question and then revisit when, you know, if it doesn't pass, then we revisit when the legal comes to our side. But I'm not postponing another vote.
Madam Chair, can I, can I ask my question from earlier? If we, if we did vote on this motion tonight, would it, would it make everyone here feel more comfortable if we said, what's a week from today? February 2, this goes into, this motion goes into effect? That would give you an opportunity, your principals, to work with your teachers, to instill your stuff. But also, we would have parents sending emails requesting the exemption, and that would give you the opportunity to determine what's the load we're looking at of children that want to be unmasked, right? Then, at least we have given our constituents what they've begged for. We've followed some level of the law. We've rebuilt, rebuilt a little of the trust, and you have a little bit more time to sort of negotiate, and then we can get our comments in it. So, I feel like, why don't we just say, can we amend the motion just to put a start date of, oh, my God, it is Wednesday, weird, to put a start date of, you know, next Wednesday, parent expectation is met, we can work with the teachers, maybe we can call upon our health and safety folks to give some briefings to the teachers about how to kind of redo their classrooms and whatnot. I don't understand why we can't create a win-win on this one. I just don't. If we, if we give everybody a week, that addresses your time comfortability, that gives the EO, the Supreme Court a chance to hit on the EO, it gives these parents who are in utter angst something to finally look forward to. And it helps those who are fearful. It gives them the opportunity to ask more questions and get more information, which can fuel their decision.
Madam Chair, I would just like to point out that if the executive order is overturned by the Supreme Court, then we yank the rug out from under these people again.
Please. Ms. Halsted, my, my request would be to give an opportunity to everyone to address the board on this issue. We have heard from, you know, from a number of people tonight. There are two sides. The other people have not had an opportunity because they did not know this matter was going to be brought. Well, we didn't know this matter was going to be brought to the board this evening. And I, I think that would only be fair and reasonable. So, my suggestion is that if we're going to consider a later date, that we set up, as Ms. Randall suggested, a, a meeting.
I, maybe I misunderstood her motion.
I'd like to finish because if we have interruptions, we're just going to have to stop, to, to set up a meeting. I, I would certainly consider that as opposed to just voting, you know, against this motion, but to, to have a, a special meeting. Just for, just for this matter. But it, it's that, if that's not, you know, something that, you know, the board wants to consider, then we can, we can vote on this motion. This motion requires five votes to pass.
I've, do I have to, again, procedural question, I apologize. Do we ha, do I, I know I don't have to, but is the question now to add an effective date? Is that what Ms. Halsted was recommending?
Ms. Halsted is recommending of, effective date. Ms. Healy, and as I tried with a friendly amendment, is to effectively call another meeting as we're trying to get to five votes. I know what you're saying, but we're trying to get to five votes.
The meeting could be as early as next week.
And he's ready, either way, to.
I'm not looking to postpone the vote. I am happy to postpone the implementation to give the division more time to prepare and provide educational materials. But I think we need to call the vote if we want to. I don't know if a Monday or a Wednesday makes better sense for the division from an educational standpoint. I had been thinking Monday, she had been saying Wednesday.
As much time as the board is willing to, to give me, just because it would be helpful.
Okay. Then, Wednesday, February 2 would be effective date.
We, is that amendment.
No, for the friendly amendment, then.
It's a friendly amendment, all right. Is that accepted by the person that seconded it?
Are you talking about setting, I'm so lost. You're setting, you're, we're setting an effective date now, right? Like that we're.
The motion, the motion will include. And not accept a friendly amendment to have a, a meeting that would allow other members of the public, especially staff and things like that, to be involved? Correct. That's their addition.
The effective date of February 2, yes.
All right. So, the. Yes, yes. The, the, does everybody understand what we're voting on? The motion to amend. The motion? No, you don't have to read it again. Unless, unless you want to. The motion that was passed last Thursday. To amend that motion to add parental opt-out, is that what you?
Correct.
To add that, to be effective on February 2. That's the motion Ms. Halsted, is that your, the motion that you seconded? Okay. Sorry, we need to be crystal clear because it is rather, rather, rather late. All right. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Madam Clark, would you pull the board?
No.
Ms. Guy?
No.
Ms. Halsted?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Ms. Randall?
No.
Ms. Sigmund?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
No.
Madam Chair, the motion fails.
All right. That brings us to information items.
Madam Chair, I can make this fairly quick for the board's consideration.
11:01, adoption of revisions to policy, 11:08, school board meetings. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you. The second one is for consideration, the early purchase of 23 buses ahead of next year's purchases. We still haven't received the ones that we ordered this year. We would like to actually have these buses before this winter's start. That's the priority of this request. The third request is to, to adjust the compensation for our nutrition workers to help stimulate some of the supply in our nutrition staff. They've been working very hard, short-staffed. We've been augmenting with some of our staff from the Bandy office to help out with some of our nutrition team. The last item is approval or consideration at your next meeting for premium rates day. We'd like to try this out for the remainder of the school year in March, April, and May to see if our Friday plan works. We, we may even be able to get it started in February if the board approves in, at its first February meeting. So, we've got three things. They're all within the board's budget and board's consideration, and that's it.
11:02, 11:03, and 11:04 will come back to the board at the next meeting. Is there any? What about 11:01? Did we, I thought we were going to defer that, we're going to defer that.
Madam Chair, we can defer that to later in the spring.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, that'll be, yes, indefinitely deferred. All right. No staff reports, although it is another day. Any staff reports today, Dr. Taylor?
Well, I did just give an even, no, no, my.
Oh, thank you. All right. Well, that brings us to the next board meetings, the budget work session on Saturday, January 29th, regular board meeting on February 8th. And in between, there will be a number of budget town halls, and we are now done, and good night, good morning, whatever.